So I've got a question real quick. Since we got kind of two dual agendas here, I'm willing to duck to duck back and forth, whatever we gotta do to get this done, deny it. Um, I guess we're gonna do the minutes first for January thirtieth, then February sixth.
Shelburne Town Council, Shelburne Town Hall, January thirty of twenty twenty-four at six P M. The meeting was called to order at six P M. with Town Council members Aaron Lewis, Jared Miller, and Noah J. Southwood in attendance. Council member Alex Morris was not in attendance. The minutes from regular meeting on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the organizational meeting on January fourth, twenty twenty-four were not allowed. There were no ministry allowed for the executive session that took place on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The minutes from the January fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting were approved and signed by the board. Council member Jared Miller made a motion to accept a new rules of decorum to take place of the current rules of decorum that were passed on January tenth, twenty twenty-two, seconded by Council President Noah J. Southwood. Council member Aaron Lewis voted no. Vote was two one, vote did not pass. Council member Jared Miller made a motion to implement a desire to appear at meeting of the Shelburne Town Council forum that requires all residents who wish to speak or bring up an issue at a town council meeting fill out this form and turn it into the town hall at least seven days before the upcoming council meeting. Seconded by Council President Noah J. Southwood, all in favor. Council President Noah J. Southwood presented a conflict of interest forum since he works at Midwestern Engineers. Council member Jared Miller made a motion to accept conflict of interest forum, seconded by Council member Aaron Lewis, all in favor. Council member Noah J. Southwood made a motion to hold the monthly council meetings on the second Tuesday of each month at six P M. of the Shelburne Community Building, seconded by Council member Aaron Lewis, all in favor. Council member Noah J. Southwood brought forward his invoice for three hundred and twenty-nine dollars at a pay meeting to attend newly elected official training and boot camp in downtown Indianapolis. He asked the council to reimburse his registration fee. A motion was made by Council member Jared Miller to reimburse Noah J. Southwood, seconded by Aaron Lewis, all in favor. In December, the town's attorney, Terry Modestet, received a letter stating a possible lawsuit between the town of Shelburne and two local tonneau businesses. Signal forty and recovery plus. Due to the fact that the town marshal and his department is no longer using county towing rotation. The letter asked that the town resolve the issue and respond back within thirty days, otherwise legal action may take place. Town attorney forwarded that letter to Town Hall where clerk treasurer Melissa Kildon made a copy for all four council members. The issue was not resolved by the outgoing council, therefore the topic was brought up at the January thirtieth meeting. After a lengthy discussion between the council and both parties, council member Jared Miller made a motion that effective immediately, the Shelburne Town Marshal and his officers would follow with the Solomon County Towing Rotation. Seconded by Council member Aaron Lewis, Council President Noah J. Southwood voted no. Vote was two one, did not pass. At the January fourth organizational meeting, Council President Noah J. Southwood had appointed Matthew Price, Lemmy Wilson, and Stephen Morgan to the Shelburne Redevelopment Commission. Lemmy Wilson decided not to be appointed, and therefore, Council President Noah J. Southwood appointed Mark Schorer as his replacement. The council has decided to schedule a special meeting on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M. at the Shelburne Community Building to discuss the item inspection issues and the need for generators at the well, fill, and flooring building. Council President Noah J. Southwood made a motion to allow our town manager, Justin Getches, to tap a new line out of Jim Fosco's property off of four hundred North, seconded by Jared Miller, all in favor. Council member Jared Miller made a motion to deny the H W C Engineering contract between the Shelburne Redevelopment Commission and H W C Engineering for the addition of ADA compliant parking lots, sidewalks, and ramps on the west side and north side of the community building, making the community building and library ADA compliant. Seconded by Aaron Lewis, all in favor. Clerk treasurer Melissa Kildon presented to Town Council with three invoices from Yargus Enterprises L L C., doing business as B N S Plumbing and Plumbing. One for twenty-five thousand and one for eleven thousand nine ninety-four. Those two total thirty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-four and are for the complete removal of the old H R cabinet and installation of the new H R cabinet at the river building. There is also a third invoice in the amount of five hundred dollars for labor to remove large grill and install screen and reinstall grill. All invoices totaling thirty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars. A motion was made from Council President Noah J. Southwood to pay the invoices with twelve thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-six cents from the River Boat Fund, eleven thousand five hundred from the Edit Fund, and the remaining balance to come from the north side tip fund. Seconded by Council member Jared Miller, all in favor. Clerk treasurer Melissa Kildon presented to Town Council with five applications for water labor. The council asked that the clerk treasurer read copies and put it in their mailbox at Town Hall, and they would review the applications prior to the next council meeting. Council member Jared Miller made a motion to hire Terry Modestet as the town attorney for the twenty twenty-four year, seconded by Aaron Lewis, all in favor. The park board has stacked terms, therefore every January there is a vacancy on the Shelburne park board. Since taking office in July twenty twenty-two, clerk treasurer Melissa Kildon had created applications for any of the town committees or boards to make it fair to residents to apply for these positions. In January, she had presented applications for Redevelopment Commission. The council president chose to not drop the applications. So clerk treasurer Melissa Kildon asked if the council wanted her to advertise the vacancy on the park board and accept applications, or were they just going to choose someone? Council member Jared Miller made a motion to advertise the vacancy and accept applications, and they would appoint someone at the next monthly meeting. Seconded by Aaron Lewis, all in favor. Council member Jared Miller made a motion to accept the thing socket, seconded by Council member Aaron Lewis, all in favor. Council President Noah J. Southwood made a motion to accept the allowance socket, seconded by Jared Miller, all in favor. There were many residents who utilized the need desire to appear at the meeting of Shelburne Town Council forum with a wide array of topics being discussed. Shelburne Daily Times reporter Isaac Compton summarized the letter that was given to the council by resident after the January fourth meeting that brought up several concerns. Some of those items discussed were terminated office manager position and its history on how and why it started, continued concerns with security at the clerk treasurer's office, what's being done about it, and concerns with the town marshal. No official action was taken on any of these topics or any other topics that were brought up. The council member Jared Miller addressed the public and said that the council would be taking a look at all the items brought up as well as the items mentioned in the letter, and they hope to have answers for the public soon. A motion was made by Council member Jared Miller to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Aaron Lewis, all in favor. Shelburne Town Council, Shelburne Town Hall, special meeting, February sixth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. The meeting was called to order at six P M. with council members Aaron Lewis, Jared Miller, Alex Morris, and Noah J. Southwood in attendance. Adam Sitkett and Linda Sanders from Wester Engineering attended to discuss the need of plans for two generator system out on the wells and flooring building. There would be a need for land acquisition for the generator replays at the flooring building as well. Council member Alex Morris made a motion to move forward the project by asking Wester to create a proposal to present to the town council for the work needed, seconded by Council member Noah J. Southwood, all in favor. A motion was made by Council member Alex Morris to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Jared Miller, all in favor. And while you're signing that, I'm just gonna ask for clarification. At the last meeting, um, we had two agendas as well, and it went over three hours. And I asked for clarification, who was going to do the agenda? Um, Aaron spoke up and said, you. And then I asked the council, is that okay that you guys come with me with your agenda items? I would put them together and then post it online. Everybody was okay with that. We can watch the video if you need to confirm it. So I was kind of caught off guard, and I created the agenda Friday, posted it online. I reached out to two of the council members to ask if they guys had anything. Aaron added something, oh, he did not. And then I got told last night at seven o'clock that the agenda got changed and things that council member did add got removed. So I would like sometime tonight, if you could make a motion so that it's in writing, who's doing the agenda and how the process is going to work? You guys getting me the information prior so that then I can add it to the agenda so that there's no more confusion or three hour meetings.
I think whichever way it goes, we need to create an email about the S three, and also the S three of the day. As long as you guys feel comfortable with us forwarding emails back and forth, whichever way it goes, that way you can see what they're posting or what they're requesting.
State board account says we can't have an open discussion in an email. That's what we're supposed to call the access.
We should do the Wednesday prior to the meeting. You gotta have a larger agenda than wherever we dive. We'll have Wednesday prior to Tuesday meeting, and that way you can get it out on Friday.
Okay, so everybody will get their topics to me by Wednesday before the meeting. I will put everything together, have the agenda made, and then express it to you on Friday. So I'll give it to you. Can we have a motion that's like?
Well, let's back up a little bit. So what you're saying, Jared, is everybody have everything like... I understand what Melissa's saying, because yeah, we can't make it look like, we can't be violating the open door law. So if we need to individually put what we would like to see on the agenda, and you're saying get it to Melissa by Wednesday before the meeting, six days out. That way she can put together, and then whatever she wants, she can put together, and then have it out by four o'clock Friday evening for us to work over, make any changes, and then send it each individually if we have to back to her? Or, well, she'll put it together, and if we want changes, we can send it back to her one more time. She may get four versions of it, but...
I mean, I won't, anything you guys won't add in, I will not remove. So if you're wanting something added, you just send it to me or, or you, you know, whoever. If one person wants to be, I will give it to me as long as I get it. I will add it to there. I mean, that's not my decision what goes on, that's everyone's decision. I just want to make sure it's clear.
So you put it together and final version out to everybody by Friday, by four o'clock Friday evening prior to the meeting, the next week?
Yep, and I will post it publicly on our Facebook page.
Well, let's get a consensus. If we all review it, maybe to email you back or somebody and say, yeah, looks good to me, looks good to me, looks good to me, then release it. How's that? I think if I get it and review it, I'm like, I'm gonna be good with it. Unless it's just something out there that's off that I didn't see coming. But I like what you're saying, I like what Jared's saying. That gives you two days to put together what you need, what we put together, and then go for a final look at it on Friday.
Alex, and so?
So, I want to...
Oh, you're right, you're right.
So will you? Will you go on to the...
I would almost cover the motion so it's not confusing.
I'll make a motion. Then, yeah, all right, so we put it in Wednesday, prior to the meeting, and now everyone's gonna get it out Friday.
And I will have it posted on Facebook, called the Infillation sixteen-one Project. That gives us our forty-eight hour agenda, because the weekend doesn't count.
Yeah, that sounds good to me, you guys.
Alex made the motion, right?
Yep, Alex made the motion.
I'll save it. I'm moving. Yeah, all in favor? I, yeah. I want to comment on the minutes, because I have some reservations. But I'm gonna, when I think, when I think something's going good, I'm gonna freaking tell it. Uh, I'm gonna compliment Melissa. I think the way you did those minutes and what you read back is very accurate of what happened. And I just want to say continue to do it, because I think that's the best representation since you made for a treasurer of how you conducted and read those minutes and took the minutes. Applaud you for that, keep up the good work.
While we're on the top of the minutes, uh, there was a little bit of confusion with the minutes that I had to spend some time on phone with the lawyer and state board accounts in AIM. So there was two items that were not passed two to one at the meeting. I think it was confusing. I honestly, that was the first time that I had been in the situation. I thought they passed two to one. Um, I think the newspaper thought they passed two to one, because your articles say they passed.
Passed what?
The two to one vote at the last meeting. Anyways, there was a bit of confusion. So I just, I want to make sure for anybody in the room or at home or whatever, they did not pass the two, the two items that were the two to one did not pass. Um, I honestly, Indiana code, I was very confused. I thought it just meant majority of who was present, which there were three present, so the two to one seemed like majority. But it wasn't, it's a majority of everyone. So just wanted to clarify that for anybody who...
Sure.
Yes.
Is there anybody we can go in and, uh, and give coordinates, create it? Because all these extra meetings, I'm, I've, I've got a heck of a work schedule, and I don't pursue me being able to handle that.
Yes, so Terry, Terry suggested that, because right now in her ordinance, there's nothing specifying any type of, like, it would just go by Indiana code or something. So he did say that if we want to have something a little bit more in detail, we can. I don't, I don't know, not really loving talking a lot, but just confirming with everybody, this did not pass.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, do we have to make a motion to send that to Terry?
Uh, what, sorry. So, um, I talked to Becca, she's the legal counsel at AIM. She said that if, if you guys, once you're all four together, if you guys choose to want to re-vote on those items, you absolutely can. Um, she called it ratifying, confirm, who can vote and, and, uh, I've never been in that situation before as clerk treasurer, so, but yes, you can. You can make those decisions if you want to vote.
I don't know this vote, I mean, the two things that did pass, I, I'm new to this, I didn't know either. What were?
Um, the rules of decorum were two to one did not pass, and the...
It was reported that the rules of decorum did not pass. It was the public request form that did pass.
Okay, and then, um, the towing thing was two to one did not pass.
On the towing thing, I gave Aaron the S O G's of the police department. Uh, it's real fancy and there how it's written. Uh, I would maybe that and review it and see what we can come up with. If it's how it's written in there, we can't really change rules for the police department. So I would, uh, we gotta review it a little bit to see what we can come up with. As of, uh, what's the... Yeah, my bad. So, uh, that S O G's, uh, the way it's, it's, uh, it needs a town marshal's approval to be able to change the rules, and that was passed by a board, I don't know what board or when, but those are the current ones that I've been given.
This is how I'm able to do this, to vote.
I don't, I don't know, I, I don't really mind you.
It was eight point one, I find.
Okay, but, uh...
I think you can look through it.
Well, I don't, I'd like to review it and then kind of look at the best decision after. Let's make copies and hand them to everybody.
All right, yeah, let's just go over the table right now, and, uh, we'll look at, I will look at the, uh, the document on the next minute. Yeah, we all can view it, we'll all next time, next meeting.
So what you're saying is you're going to copy all three of those?
Yeah.
Okay, prior, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds good. Let's, let's move on.
Yeah, I'm ready. What was the...
Tell me what, Christine, she's got it, doesn't she?
Yeah. Yes, yes.
I bet she can get her stuff.
Yeah.
You don't need us, we actually.
We're not the only ones that are, we don't care about, we're not even trying to...
So, hi, everybody, the John panelists, we're Thrive West Central. Um, we do a lot of things with all of our communities. We serve approximately six communities. We're about ready to bring on our seventh community, which will be, uh, Skidney County, which will be the governor county. So, okay, we're gonna be governor to approve that. Our service area is six counties right now, Park, Cuttenham. And I'm gonna turn off the lights so you can see this, okay? Help nobody's afraid of the dark, anyway. Please do not hesitate to raise your hand if you have any questions, Jerry, miss. The presentation itself is very brief, so you're not gonna hear me talk a lot. My team member here is Jordan, and she is our grant specialist. And I am the associate director of community development. Again, my name is Chris Gruber. So as you can see, these are the counties that we currently serve. West Central, back in the day, was called the Economic Development Division of West Central Indiana. Obviously, we didn't care for that long then. So in two thousand twenty, we are now doing business for Thrive West Central. So in addition to what we do, our mission, we want to be, we want to be here to help communities to improve quality of life and do all kinds of wonderful projects so that your communities thrive. Go ahead, the next one. Okay, so these are our four focus areas. So basically Thrive has four divisions or departments. We have aging and disabled, community development, transportation, and housing. Let's give you just a brief update of kind of what was going on with aging. Aging and disabled resources are those individuals, they, you can call their office, and they've got caseworkers and referral agents and so forth to determine if you need and can get services and will refer you to services that qualify for, for those individuals. So this is what they call a resource center. They provide information, referrals, and so forth. So, um, I have found them very helpful with aging parents. Um, I've contacted them a couple of times, and there's, they, they tell me all the services that are available, and then we can go to, if we need to. Case match areas on the bottom. Basically, they have, I don't know how many people know, their caseload is very large, but they do go out and visit individuals and we love that kind of stuff, make sure everything's going well. Recently, we did receive a grant from Indiana Housing Community Development, and those funds are gonna help us go to eligible, excuse me, eligible homeowners in Clay and Vigo County to build ramps. So they're doing some amazing things over there.
Um, we also have a no wrong door policy. So if you need help with SNAP benefits, um, housing, or Medicare, or anything like that, you have questions, you can always call us, and we can point you in the right direction as well.
The other part we have is transportation. And transportation is available pretty much for anybody, but it's mostly donation for those that, um, sixty and over. Uh, this is a hard one. So we can provide transportation. Anybody can call us and say we need transportation to X to X. The only stipulation is it has to be rural. Meaning if you're inside Terre Haute, anywhere, go to another place in Terre Haute, we can't do that because we are contracted with the state to provide rural transportation. However, if someone in Shelburne needs to get into Terre Haute, we can do that. Okay? So there's lots of different places that we can, can go and do. Um, this department's very creative, so please don't ask kids to call just, even if you don't think it's rural, okay? So please call, because they're very, we've got, they told us what? We have a gentleman that they take to work. He's technically in Vigo or Skidney, Terre Haute. He walks across the street, and now he's not in Terre Haute, so we can pick him up. So we are very willing to work with you. As you can see, non-emergency groceries, we take your social gatherings, even community events, all within the business hours, um, what was it? Eight to four. Eight to four, okay? So, um, housing, grant new division, going to investors. So we have a dynamic department now that they're working the housing strategies. They've done housing studies, analysis. Basically, we're just trying to figure out anything and everything associated with housing so we can help the communities get what they need. Right now, we're doing some major things with, um, developers. We're providing, um, loans to help them go out to areas and develop affordable housing. The loans we provide will be for infrastructure. So there's a lot of places that want to build, but the infrastructure stops at a certain point. In order to build, you guys want your utilities. So that's some of the things that we're doing. Again, very, very exciting things going on there. Um, recently, we have noticed, I don't remember how many houses we've got now. Fifteen hundred, okay? So we are adding another, what, fifteen hundred into the area. And part of that analysis does look at if who can absorb and who can help sustain and for rural need. So this is where Jordan and I work, our department's community development. As you can see, we have got a plethora of services that we can do. We pretty much can, we've had experience on almost any type of project you can imagine. Um, infrastructure, we do on, on-demand mapping. We have a wonderful person, T I S, so you can just pop up a lot of data for us and do a lot of mapping. We, public involvement. Jordan, what have you got there?
Um, we do a lot of public involvement for our different grants. We've done, um, this is a picture of our Vermillion's Brownfields grant that we did. Um, we walked in the Vermillion County forage fair this year. Um, we have a four hundred thousand dollar grant to, um, work on Vermillion Brownfields. I don't know if you guys are familiar, familiar with what a brownfield is. Um, basically, uh, redeveloping, um, an area that used to be used, such as like an old gas station or a laundromat, and redeveloping those areas.
So some of the things that we work with is E P A., which is the Environmental Protection Agency. Brownfields is one of the projects we're doing. We've worked with O P R A., um, Office of Community Rural Affairs, um, trying to secure some funds for blight elimination. Um, planning grants are going on with that, and then we've also worked with construction grants on infrastructure with O P R A. Um, E D A. is economic development authority. Um, we are working with them and are working with Rose Holman to construct a new building for them. Um, those are the first, the three ones that I can remember right now. But we are in the middle of, um, working with another county to possibly do a park plan for the county. We have financial analysis proposal out there. We have, um, dogs, uh, not clay, Fairclay County, therapy dog grant that just went in as well. Um, we do a variety of different things, comprehensive plans, broadband readiness, uh, public feasibility, so like stormwater, wastewater, those types of plans. We also just work with Ernie Pile Museum in Vermillion County for an Indiana Destinations Grant. Um, so we have done quite a bit, quite a bit. And that pretty much sums up a lot of what we do. So this next slide, this is on the individuals that are the directors of the E T B's? Yes, sir?
Hey, just a piggyback off that, um, just to break it a little bit for all of the people. When they're talking about working for Brown, um, Brownfield, uh, super easy to work with. They're also the ones that cleaned up the H and A's that came in and did the environment on the redevelopment, a lot, um, the hood concrete, the old H and A's that came through and removed all the tanks, and then they had to come back and remove the pipes and fill them in, um, the whole, like, I don't want to say well, but it's kind of like what it was, what it was in there, like all the oil pipes and everything. They're the ones that come clean all that up, first on grant. They called nothing, went to backfill, did all of that, when they were in the project. And they were super, super easy to work. Like, you just call, and you're like, okay.
We have, we have the, yeah, your liaison between all these things so that you guys can help them down. We do, for example, Fox Group called me this week. They had some assessments done, and they haven't heard anything yet. So we got that taken care of, and they're ready to go. Yes, that's a lot of what we do. Any other questions? Feel free. So we stand ready to help you guys out with anything you need. Yes, sir?
I think, and I wanted, that's one of the reasons I wanted you to be here to do the presentation. I've talked to a couple of council members about the need for this community to have a comprehensive master plan. Can you, uh, give a little bit on a comprehensive master plan? What it is, what the advantages are for communities that do go through the process?
Right. Um, one of the struggles that our team has is when we come to communities and we ask them what their needs are and what their thoughts are for the future, and we really don't get a lot of feedback. Comprehensive plan pulls all kinds of data, information, input from the community. A lot of times, we do what we call community visioning, which means bring people like you in who are like this, and we talk about the things you'd like to see happen. We put all of that stuff into a comprehensive plan. We would be looking at, uh, housing, utilities, parks, your amenities, your assets, your deficiencies, all of that stuff would go into this plan, and then that helps us grow back. And then you can prioritize, and then you can also plan which one to do next, which was the most important, okay? And then that helps us also gather and, and, excuse me, and match it to funding resources. There's a lot of resources out there that love to see the project you're applying for in and... in a comprehensive plan. It basically shows that your community is forward-thinking and has a plan as a strategy. That helps. Any questions about comprehensive plan?
So, yeah, so having a comprehensive plan, that would, like, if you're applying for a grant, you have this plan, that would increase...
That increases your power here, yes. So we're very familiar with Oprah, which is Office of Community Rural Affairs. They do give bonus points if you do have that project in a comprehensive plan and/or in our plan. So part of what we have to do for the state federal government is we also have to have a strategy plan. And we have projects and other types of interests and action plans for each county. So if you guys wanted to do a large park improvement and it's in a comprehensive plan, yours and in ours, you would get additional points in that particular application. But like I said, that really helps us help you plan. What that also does is it gives you an opportunity that, sorry to say, lots of opportunities of funding out there require a match of some kind. So this also allows you to plan for those matches that you guys know into 2025, we're gonna apply for X. We've got a year to figure out where that match come from. So that helps too, so you're not pan-technical, helps us that we're not pan-technical. Because we do, we do, we work with a lot of communities that are what we call meter, and they call us and say, we need this, and the application's due next month. Doing this, you've got that roadmap already set. And it's a lot easier to do that and get the funding that you need in a timely manner. Now, what I can say is, would you, go ahead, you asked first.
What would we need funding for?
What would you need funding for?
Yeah.
Okay. What types, what types of permits would you like to see in your community?
I'd just like to see the town cleaned up. I don't wanna go into debt any further than we already are. I don't wanna borrow money just to pay it back. You need somebody else to help me, I can get a federal grant.
So for example, if you needed one of your buildings knocked down, we could apply the Oprah grant and that money would pay to the market. Okay?
No, around here, just get drunk and run into it. Problem solved, cleaned up. I don't understand, I don't understand. You know, I guess I'm missing a broader picture of every time I come in and we're in debt and we're losing money, and here's a way to get further than that.
A grant is money that you don't have to pay back.
Yeah, somebody gotta pay it somewhere.
Correct, but that's what your taxes dollars are paying.
I'm just, I'm just curious, what it is we need?
That's what a comprehensive plan, that's what a comprehensive plan is.
Well, I mean, I look at like, the more we do, which I love living in a small town, I wouldn't hear. But I don't want my small town running into a big town or getting such great upgrades that my taxes go up because that's how faced with a grant, you get the government money back because taxes will fund back into it. I'm gonna do my own stuff, fix it myself, help the community, and go over it and have it be upgraded. And we'll take pride in it.
One of the things that I can point out, we desperately need to be part of this.
Okay. So let's take back our example, okay? Knowing that it's in the plan, we would be calling and working with Department of Natural Resources. And we know there's a public park plan. I'd say this is what we're after now. And then we would work to put in an application to get funding to purchase those and get them installed. Okay? So that's part of what that comprehensive plan would do. They would say, okay, great, you've got a park plan, you've got a comprehensive plan, you guys are ready to go. Boom, here you go, let's give you some money, move and work.
The town does what it needs to get out of grocery store. Is that, is that a business that you can help bring into the community or help attract in any way?
That is something that our organization can help with, okay? Now, and I'm gonna go this way. If we search for funding, we will be searching for what they call food desert, which means you guys have a hard time getting food. You have to actually drive along the way to get groceries. So those are, there are options and opportunities that could potentially fit that need, okay? So those are things, but without this plan, part of that plan's gonna say, okay, we wanna grocery, but we gotta do X, Y, Z to get that groceries. And that will help us get those steps in and get those completed so we can potentially then earn it.
But you have resources and avenues there with this plan. That's potential.
The plan will tell us that there's the need.
Okay.
And then with that plan, and part of that plan, it will identify some funding resources for some of probably your priorities. But yes, Drive then knows that this is one of the issues. We then, and I don't know, you, Jordan, we get at least, what, ten notifications a day of opportunities that are out there. From this, we can match it to you guys if you don't know. That makes sense. And the same way with the towns. You guys don't know what you need, you can't call us and say, we need help with, okay? Does that help answer your question?
It does. I just see that this town desperately needs transportation of some sort.
Got it.
And a grocery store, among other things, but those are the two things that just comes to my mind right off the bat. So I was just wondering how, or if you could help facilitate something like that.
So, yes, and there's another program coming out, Safe Streets. We're all, like I said, there's a lot of things. What happens though too is we can tell your council of all of these things that are coming through and it's gonna be, wow, candy store, let's go act around a brand. And that's not gonna help the town, okay? So this particular plan, if you will, will also help any additional electric officials or anybody else associated with the town and services. So it's the concrete thing, kinda like the Bible, the Passover, you know? Here's our wish list, let's keep moving, okay? Anything else? Yes, sir?
Just real quick, you were talking about the housing division? That's a new one that you all added and you're collecting data and stuff like that. Will that lead to providing, you know, or trying to work to provide more affordable housing to people who may be looking for a home or may potentially be homeless?
Right. So part of what they've done, we've done housing analysis with all of our communities. We've looked at cities and some of the communities that have actually done their own have us going dive through as to what exactly type of housing do we need? Do we need, you know, senior housing? Do we need apartments? Do we need single family? So then we took all that data and in this program now is we're setting up basically this request for proposals from developers. And developers fill out a major application, tell you what, not on that side of the application. It's, you know, they do that and they look at that and say, where are you putting it? Is this meeting that data that we're seeing? And is it affordable? So affordable's different for everybody, it's different in every location. So that's what's happening now. So we're building a more affordable and needed housing or housing that people are expecting. Is that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thank you. And I just wanna follow up real quick. Could some of that housing that you helped develop, could that be subsidized by the federal government? Like, such as rent control and stuff?
It would depend on the developer and if the developer is part of that program.
Okay.
So yes, and maybe. Just to answer your question.
Yes, thank you so much.
Great. So another interesting thing that we're doing is possibly a public safety survey at the collection. So there was another agency that asked us to go around and see what their capacity is, what their workload is, and help them figure out, you know, to balance that we've got so many people and we need so many people. So we're hoping to embark on that pursuit. So there's lots of different things that we can, that's just a handful. We don't just go after grants. We do try to help you guys navigate what you need and get to the resources. Sometimes the resources aren't always grants, but helping you determine what's out there and the types of ways you can use it and use your assets. Go ahead.
Those are, as many grants we could apply for, the paper management.
Okay, to pay for the, yes, thank you for asking that. So Oprah, as I mentioned, has a lot of different programs. And one of the applications you can apply to get funding to do a comprehensive plan. And the full amount of the grant would be $50,000. So that $50,000, we would hire someone to come out here and we'll get all the data that we mentioned, look at all your assets, turn it all together, help do a lot of your public involvement. We would also be strongly involved with that part. And then show, develop this plan. And then Oprah says, yea or nay? And then they say, yeah, everything looks good. So yes, there is funding out there for that, okay? Oprah has a one, a stipulation, if you will. Everybody's got their own eligibility things. Oprah requires the applicant to be what they call low income. And we've already checked them and council needs that eligibility. So there's no problem to say, you go for that money, okay?
What number do you ask?
Ten percent, that's a ten percent. So you don't have to go for a full fifty, but, you know, I would recommend it so that you would have a solid one. Yeah, it would be a ten percent match. Now, there's a lot of places that match, does not have to be literal cash. There are sometimes, they can do what they call incolony. It's a little more difficult with a plan. In a construction situation, if somebody donated the concrete, that would be part of that. So there are other ways of doing it other than this cash.
How long does a master plan do before? I'm sure there's a plan, maybe I had to redone it.
A lot would like to see it three to five years. So one thing, you do a plan, they'd like to have you as the town plan what would you like to see done in the three to five year journey. We have a county that had theirs done two years ago. They wanted to update it and Oprah said, too soon, too soon. So they're trying to give you, and that's mine, I apologize. They are trying to give you plenty of time to do some of those projects, okay? So the data's gonna be as good as it is, you know, everybody knows. Unless there's a major change, data's gonna be good, okay? Any other questions? Hand that to Jordan tomorrow. Change, a comprehensive plan?
Go ahead, take that.
If the town decided to go for a comprehensive master plan, what's the earliest round for the next?
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth? Okay, so we basically would have to come up with a ten percent match of $50,000. And that would be a commitment letter, basically, in the application and then have to prove that we...
Yes, they like to see like financials of your budget, yes.
Okay, okay.
So what that means is you can apply and show what they call letter of commitment. And then if you receive the award, then you have to say now, prove to us that you have it. That's what that means.
So we applied for by April fifteenth and you would know when would be the award?
That's when the proposals do. Yes, the actual applications do make seventeen. So you have about a month to get the full application completed.
So what Oprah likes to do is they have a face, that means the local submit that, Oprah looks at and says, yea, you do match and you meet eligibility and we like the project, move forward, that's the full application. And that's why there's two days, okay? And then if for some reason, even if you're not selected or selected, you can get a debriefing, that's what we always do. We always go back to these agencies and say, tell us how to make this better. What can we do if I apply next time to secure it? So we are always looking at those to make sure we're not missing anything. Oprah, we have a community liaison, we actually meet with her monthly to make sure that we're doing everything right and everything's on board and she can help with this. Anything else? Yes?
And if they do that, how are you gonna know what the community wants? Does everybody anticipate, gonna take it to Melissa's? You guys know what the community wants?
Sure, we can do a lot of different things.
Well, because you got a short plan and once they decide to apply in April.
That, the public input, it's very, we call it the planning process. So that will come during the planning period. You have a cross hearing, you have a session.
About one, oh?
About a year.
Okay.
Okay, so if one's aborted, the plan will really kick in that public involvement engagement.
The community has to be involved.
Oh, yes, definitely. And what you'll see with Drive is a lot of places think a public hearing or talking about it and everything like this, they consider that public engagement. We disagree. That is not public engagement. Me talking to you is not public engagement. So we do extra and we strongly encourage your consultants we work with, do extra. So we have spent, we have hosted what we call community visioning, which would be, hey, everybody, here's the night, come over, let's sit down and talk about what's going on. And take all of your information, take it back, incorporate it in your merit. And part of what we do is if you have a comment, we will reach out to you and check and see how things are going or make sure you have it right. So it's enough to do that point.
So this is all about hiring, do, you've done some, I'm losing, what do we put in for?
If you...
What's a $5,000 grant going to do? I mean, it's not gonna work for you, we're talking about a whole...
No, you buy your own.
Yeah, buying, buying is gonna buy your own.
So you can get one score grant.
Right. And it gives your council direction.
It's got, gives them a vision of where you're going. Okay, this town would like to build a new restaurant or they would like to encourage a new restaurant. Or they would like to build a new park or build a park for the kids.
Right.
The water park.
What's really key about this is it's community-driven. It is not electric official-driven, it's community-driven, which means your input, your suggestion, your ideas. On what's taken to and put into this plan. And then they develop that plan to say, all right, from everything, the data, the input, and from this review, we see this being the priority. Now, we've got this little plan, everybody must stay bored, let's talk and get some funding and see what we can do with this program.
Chris, do we have a plan in the past that we can, do you know, have you guys gone with us before? We can go back and have...
With you guys?
Yeah.
Not tonight, okay? Not tonight. We do and we can share comprehensive plans with others. What the mine then does is it pays for that and helps you to do all of that stuff, okay? So that's a grant and you would have to pay that back. With the state, yeah, that's part of state.
It's constantly the government. But if you like work somewhere, maybe you can do that.
Are there any other questions that I can address at this point? Great. If not, we're pretty much done, but please, this is our phone number. That's our website, lots of wonderful information about housing. That is also a great place to find out about our aging. That is also a great place to find out about our agency, who's able to do that. Hop on there and see. Um, if you want, contact us, we might be able to show you, uh, what we call a lockup of a, a comprehensive plan. Um, Oprah, there's a lot of different plans you can do, a comprehensive plan pretty much covering all topics. Um, that's what I suggest, instead of doing a broad end plan. Because that just doesn't look okay. Comprehensive is gonna look a lot more than that. Okay, anything else? Yeah.
We changed, you got like a, like slideshow of what, yeah, the couple of community get?
So, if you go to our website, you have something for our projects on, yes.
That's basically it.
Yeah.
However, saying, saying that business, we did just talk to, um, our G I S guy, you know, I have. I got pictures of, um, a storm guard. And you saw the brownies, that picture, you know, the brownies. As you can see, it's very moving, it tried to get a little mole. So that, that P A one you saw, brownies and brownfields, we walked, we walked in the parade, we have a booth at the parade. We handed out brownies, brownies and brownfields. And then, um, we have an interactive map, and all the images come up and you point to the map. So, lots of different ways you can do and, and collect information. Great. Alright, I hope you're here for some of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete, can you go by? I did also want to mention, we do help with A D A plans, like we're getting to us A D A stuff. And we do processes and that's the.
Thank you.
Alright. We had, uh, replay, review applications for water laborer on the one agenda. Um, Alex, do you wanna give us an update on what you, what you're working on with that briefly?
It's all out.
It's all out, okay.
Well, we probably need to table that, work on that a little bit more. Um, what is it?
Uh, basically. Like the water laborer, like he was talking, you know?
I think we need to set up interviews and get going, so.
Okay.
I think we need to get interviews going soon and get them hired sooner, so we're running out of time, so, like, quick.
So do you wanna, the applications we've got, or you wanna re-advertise for some more instead of?
I said, take the five we got, we set an interview up with all five of them and, uh, interview all five of them, see what we can do.
I reviewed the applications and I, I'd like to have more applications for it.
Okay.
I know we can do this soon, but, uh.
Right.
But also wanna hire somebody that's a good worker, that's where I agree. They'll do the job, you know, I mean, it's, uh, it's very physical, I mean, it's a lot of hours, I mean, it's, you know, you're down a hole a lot of time.
Do you have a suggestion on where we should advertise this besides just the paper? I mean, you have any suggestions on to broaden it out a little bit to, uh, um, maybe get more of an appeal? Maybe more to pool workers' potential?
Yeah, I guarantee we might go with workforce one, I mean, they've always got people in there trying to look for work. And, uh, you know, let them know that we're, we're looking for somebody.
Do you wanna use the same criteria that we did for the first round of applications and just post it on workforce one? Job description, salary starting, that sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, I mean, I, I went through them and, uh, I know for fifteen dollar an hour, I'm not gonna, you know, I mean, you know, I'm not gonna get a lot of people probably. I mean, McDonald's, I thought thirteen, I think, or something.
So are we still looking for a general laborer, is that what, is that what we're looking for?
Yeah, we, we, they need help, um, we need help. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, I mean, I know we need to assume, but I'd like to, I'd like to more, I'll catch you to look at it really, I mean.
And just to clarify, do you want these people, like, because a couple of them were at the last meeting. So are you wanting me to reach out to them, let them know you want them to reapply, or you're still considering their application?
No, uh, uh, there's a couple of them still concerned.
Okay, so they don't need to reapply what you're asking?
No, I got that, I'm, I'm, I'm holding out to them. Uh, we wanna start like a, 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 like a.
I'd say probably maybe set it up for at least two weeks, maybe work with Melissa on putting on workforce one. Or workforce development somehow. I, I would do a narrative of what you want. I mean, it's up to you, I, I, I'll agree with whatever you want with that because, you know, it's a general laborer, water, wastewater streets, I say, you're talking three combination department. You need to figure out how much you will, how much you want to start to pay. Of course, it's gonna be full time, you're gonna be offered benefits, purse a hundred percent paid, retirement, insurance they get for themselves, not their depends, but on them and be a hundred percent paid.
But, I, like I said, I'm, I'm filed for fifteen an hour, you know? But we realize we've got something good with this person, that I think, I mean, within, you know, ninety days, we need to let them know, we really appreciate it, and, uh, I'll, I'll offer them a little bit of money.
Well, you can put them on ninety day, you can put them on ninety eight pro basis, and then you're good, after that, everything looks good and you can kick in the, kick in the salary higher, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, I, I'd go with, I mean, you know, so we get somebody in there that's doing good, I hate to, you know, lose them, you know, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I think we should, yeah, set that up for a couple of weeks and then, and then, I'll go come up with something that's community, give them a hand.
So what do you wanna do, base salary? I mean, based?
I'm, 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 like I said, they're, they're good workers and we need to, we need to hold on to them.
So you wanna do like fifteen an hour, base that on thirty-five hours and then whatever that comes out to a year?
Yeah, I think thirty-one.
Uh, yeah, I, I think it's, you know, thirty-one, five, thirty-two, something like that, okay? I don't problem with it, I think, if you wanna reach out, workforce development sounds like, I think that would broaden it out and just put in, you know, attribute in this all day, times that's gonna reach out to more.
Yeah, but that's, people go there and looking for work and that's the.
Right.
So I, I have the calendar pulled up, so today's the thirteenth, obviously it's not gonna get in until August, tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we wanna leave it open until your next meeting, which is, you're looking at March twelfth? Are you wanting to try to end it at the end of this month and then squeeze in an executive session for your March twelfth meeting so that you can hire this person on March twelfth?
Yeah.
Dustin's gone in two weeks, and then they're down to just two guys.
Can I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
Um, after the first, or after Dustin leaves, uh, our guys don't dig anymore, they don't get in holes, they don't anything until we get a third guy again.
Yeah.
They're, it, it's done, so we're gonna have to hire someone for this week, so if we get a water rain or anything like that.
I was gonna ask, what happens if Hollywood goes like they did with the day, what happens if?
I'm, 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 I am.
Then we'll all come to your house.
Well, we, we employ the town board.
Yeah.
Well, we need to some quick, and, yeah, but, like, at the same time, if we get somebody in there that.
Would it be a bad idea?
Just to stand there, we don't, I mean, I can stand there.
Yeah, would it be a bad idea to, uh, open or keep it going, but do a midway interview process potentially, let's, uh, like, interview these guys?
I mean, how, how do you guys know these aren't good workers if you have, you know what I mean, like, like, at least do them opportunities if they show up and you, you know what I mean?
I think you're gonna have to do, I think you're gonna have to scale down and, and pick like three. And then you definitely, if you're interested, you wanna do back, criminal background checks on them.
That, that's on there.
And, and get that, and get that in place. And you gotta be careful to get.
Yeah, well, and some of these applications, if they're not told, they might already have a job.
That's true too, you know, I mean.
Yeah, these, these were all put in and just something.
So can we, uh, can we, uh, uh, have a reprocess next week, get a, get ahold of each one of them? I mean, if we get five people to show up, we can scale them out, I mean, twenty minutes, but.
What day do you wanna do it, Alex?
Uh, Tuesday, if it's available. I'm, I'm, I don't know what it is, I don't, it's about the only available day to go. Do that work for everybody? I mean, if not, you know.
Uh, it works for me.
Now.
Depends on the time.
Yeah. Why can't we just, you know? Let's say the twenty-seventh, I don't wanna be around, um.
You just gotta have a, a forty-eight hour notice for me to notify the paper, the executive session, and obviously I have to call the people in.
Yeah, um.
What, does anybody have something on twenty seconds?
Could we? Yeah, I, twenty seconds, it's up in the air, I'm not sure right now, I may have to be in Indianapolis that night, I'd hope I don't have to be. Well, I know President's Day is, it's a holiday, but is there any way we could do it on the nineteenth?
I'm available every minute, I'm available.
I can go on the nineteenth, I got nineteenth, I could definitely do it nineteenth.
Alex, does that work for you, or?
I can do my best, that's all I can promise. I mean, as long as the interview process happens, we get Joel in there, get Dustin in there.
I'm gonna be available the nineteenth for the toy.
I like that.
Well, Joel, Joel's the former, so I guess.
I mean, I suggest you get, I mean, I'm not having, gonna have minimal input anyway, I mean, I only got a week left, so I'd suggest bring Joel in.
Joel, you free the mic, Keith? Okay.
So nineteenth, what time?
Anytime after three, I'll, I'll. Three thirty? I'm fine with that. Three thirty?
Three thirty, okay.
So, I'll call them, are we interviewing all five, or do you, do you wanna make a selection on who you wanna?
Probably a background check on all five of them before we did background.
So have, have Matt do a background check first? So the nineteenth, three thirty at town hall, executive session to interview, and what?
Yeah.
And then I think Matt did the background, but you don't wanna let him do that, or maybe give him a copy of these?
Okay, so we got, um, the replacement wastewater, water superintendent, that kind of tells what I had Dustin Getch's water wastewater agreement. Um, I forwarded that agreement that Dustin gave us last council meeting to, uh, Terry Bottis, Terry Bottis reviewed it, he had no problem with it, so, it's, it's good to go as far as Terry's concerned on, on agreement. And I guess it hasn't changed anything from Dustin since he brought it to us. We didn't change anything, and he just, I just scanned it to him, he said it looked good to him. So, it's up to you on what you wanna do, um.
There's a thirty day termination.
Termination period.
That goes for both of us.
Yeah.
So if there's.
It's.
Crazy crap going on, I could possibly say it too, you know, it goes both places.
It, it's pretty much like it was when we, when you first came, you, few years ago with the wastewater. It's compensation's thirty-five hundred per month. Till the end of December, thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, includes twenty-four hundred for wastewater operations and five hundred for preventive maintenance. And six hundred for water operations as a, as a certified liaison. Um, nothing painters should be paid first of the month, which is standard.
That's just in there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The board meeting or whatever.
Yes, yeah. I have no problem with it, I think it's, I think it's a good thing myself, um. I don't make a motion that we accept the water wastewater agreement for the town to show or buy Dustin Getch's D B A Southern Indiana compliance.
I'll second it.
Got a motion second, all in favor? I, I. Wanna make this March first on the date, agreement date?
That'd be us.
We'll make two, we'll do two, give you one.
Yep. That one is a little messed up, the one with the M C, that'll be my copy, cause.
I wonder what that stood for.
And if you guys get a water up there, kind of, or Joe decides to get water licenses, just, any, any part of us turning in, we won't at the end of any month, so.
Do you know, yeah, since you mentioned Joe, Joe, um, do you know if he would have to have more experience, but he, he would qualify?
Yeah, he's just got a little experience outside of, I don't know.
Awesome, okay. So I guess, oh, yes, you just study when he feels like he's ready to take the test and he can take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But then the wastewater's got a possibility to go farther, but I'd rather not the water.
Right. Do you'd like to get that sent in so you won't have to, that be over with for you?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'd feel more comfortable with it.
With the wastewater?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is one of us, us, like a town hall?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you guys got one, I got one.
Is it, I don't know, the N C one, George, that's it?
Yeah. Is it signed? I mean, everybody did sign it, yeah.
Uh, I'll take this and make others, if you guys want to.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, let's get some of this other stuff out of the way, still this park board stuff, and they can wait. Redevelopment Commission, everybody's ready to go, so, all that, we got there, I got notification on all of them, everybody's bond signed. So, all they have to do now is get together, host it, you know, deciding when they wanna have a meeting. Um, thought what I would do is get all their names and addresses and send a group emailed out, all of them, and then let them decide when they want, when they wanna form. Is that our everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so you got mowing bid, approval, accepting bids, all that, so.
I still got good see agenda, if you guys want to.
Yeah. I saw one, one property that needs to be removed. Uh, corner Maple and Thomas Street, the town doesn't own it. That's right across from the Methodist Church.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't own that property. We took the house down, but we never did buy it.
Can you specify which one was on there, so I can see?
Two oh threes Maple, corner Maple Street and Thomas Street, two oh threes Maple.
And then, I updated Alex, but I'll just kinda update you guys too, so, from last year, the only thing that's different on this is, uh, the redevelopment commission purchased the saloon at Garter Store, so we added those on here to get mowed. And then, um, a few areas of the weed killer, we added, uh, we normally pay a guy a hundred and eighty bucks a month during the summer from Colonial Land Saving to treat one side of the, um, railroad. And, um, so I just added on here so that we can cut that one eighty expense every month out, seems kinda crazy, just for one, one little area. Um, and then the mower guy can just do that, he, he honestly sprays like right beside it, so he might as well just spray that when he's doing it. So, and I can't imagine that it's gonna change the bill an extra hundred eighty, you know what I mean? But I just need a, a vote to, this is good, and then a vote that I can start advertising for this so that you guys can, can have some bids in and be ready to vote on that at the March meeting.
I make a motion, we adopt this, you know, the, uh, list of properties and the specifications that we want at the bottom. So Melissa can advertise that to potential contractors, submit quotes.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
And I will, I will make that adjustment to the one property on there, so that goes off before I advertise.
Okay, and do you normally have those where they require them to have a seal, and then a sealed envelope?
I, yeah, I did last year.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, that way, to me, it just makes it harder.
Um, and when I advertise it in the paper, I will not list all of those because that would cost a lot of money too, so I'll just put that this list is available on our website, or, or at the town hall, if you can come and pick up the paper.
Okay.
Are we, are we skipping Park Board, I have an application, are we skipping that?
No, we're gonna go to it, I want to save it till.
Okay.
We got, uh, you had down clarification for communications with vendors, so let's.
Uh, a couple of our vendors reached out, I was just asking, one specifically asked, but I put it on the agenda tonight, um, they just wanted clarification, in the past, they've always had communication with the clerk treasurer. Um, this year, there has been other communication and that they were just kind of confused on who, who they need to be having communication with. Um, and then I also noticed an email came through, in the regular charter email, from Lou Britton, talking about a report that's due on April fifteenth, that it sounded like maybe Mr. Southwood and him had a discussion about it. But I've already got the progress going with Baker Tilly, who normally does it, so I just don't want to have the town have expenses for two different items.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so, just, just kind of like you do with the agenda, kind of clarifying.
Yeah, that, that, go ahead and reach out to Lou and get that directly with you, because you need to know more about it than I do, since you're. Uh, by state law, whether you want to be or not, involved with the redevelopment commission, I always hated it, but state says, yeah, you gotta do it, so your communication with him would be better, because those reminders like that April fifteenth, that is a deadline, so you need to be aware of it more than I do, so just, you know, reach out to him and just have him just start emailing you direct on that.
Well, I mean, it wasn't so much with Lou, it was just I had already started the progress, the process with Baker Tilly, you know what I mean?
Oh, okay, okay.
I didn't want Lou to be working on it because you had talked to Lou and then Baker Tilly.
Okay, no, 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 I haven't had any communications on Lou, that, yeah, you want definitely Baker Tilly, I don't know who your point person is, I don't know if it's still Jason similar or, or not, but yeah, that's, that, that, Baker Tilly and Lou on the redevelopment commission, that's, you know, they, you should be talking directly, communicating both with them, yeah, I shouldn't have any input in that.
And then Springer Insurance was the one that, that actually requested this, this be put on the agenda tonight, they just wanted clarification, who would be communicating with them from the town?
Okay, alright, let's, let's go ahead and, and put you in that, because main thing I wanted to do with these, this redevelopment commission, just to make sure everything got off really quick, I wanted, I wanted to get them up and going. So, at this point, handling the bonds in the future and that, um, I think you probably just would deal directly with Danielle, Danielle Monroe, think more than AJ on the bonds and things. Anything with the insurance, yeah, I don't need to be involved in that, unless it's something I gotta sign or something, so.
So, they just asked, well, we have a motion that, that would be the clerk treasurer.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion, clerk treasurer's point contact.
I second it.
I second you.
Motion made second, all in favor.
Aye, aye.
They're quiet in there.
Yeah, boy, that's got my.
And then I have the, I'll pass them down, or do you want me to read them aloud, they're the, uh, bids that the park board opened yesterday for the concrete work for their grant. Do you like me to open that, read them aloud, is that okay? So we had three bids, uh, three different companies, KTI Incorporated was one, uh, Christopher Hamilton and Hamilton Mechanical was the second one, and the third one was Donnie Phelps of Outdoor Concepts. Um, I had them give us two quotes, because we have two projects going on, and we weren't sure budget-wise if we'd be able to do both, so we had two separate quotes, one for each project, that way if one couldn't go through, we'd at least do one. So KTI, their first bid for the first quote, which is making the bathrooms, the concession stand, everything all completely ADA compliant, twenty-eight hundred dollars, that's connecting all the concrete there together. Their second bid, which will continue to make that area ADA compliant, that will connect all of the concrete area, the water pad, over to a, um, twelve by sixteen shelter house pad, three thousand one hundred ninety dollars. The exact same, uh, logistics for that for Christopher Hamilton and Hamilton Mechanical is going to be eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two. He broke that down as four thousand six hundred and eight to make the concession stand and bathrooms, uh, ADA compliant, and additional one thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars to make the west dugout area ADA compliant, and then the twelve by sixteen pad, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and then the sidewalk tying that pad together, ninety dollars, which gave you a total of eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two.
Oh, so.
Um, my math.
Fifty-nine and nine you.
Okay, last one is from Donnie Phelps, uh, Outdoor Concepts, both bids were four thousand, so eight thousand total for hers. Hers said ADA compliant sidewalks and ramps, the concession stand and the restrooms, and ADA ramp entrance by the restroom area, four thousand PSI concrete, heat and water with calcium to help the cure process, fiber to help the shrinkage tracking and surface cracks. So, um, the park board, I don't, I don't know, before we voted when we did the community building, I don't know if we actually have a say, so they, they did vote and just recommend who would like to go with KTI, because it is the cheapest option, or trying to get as much money out of, you know, as much as we can out of that total amount of grant, but it's, it's obviously up to you guys.
I think I would.
So I would pass those down to you as reviews. So, at the end of the day, we did the motion to accept one, so that we can call and get started.
Well. I wanted to hold this off, we gotta, we're gonna have to do this since the park thing's moving too fast here. Um, I'm gonna read you the timeline, researched on these minutes and everything going back to March twenty-twenty-two. Um, town council votes to give park board staggered terms to comply with the Indiana Code, Ken Miller, Democrat, four term, you, four-year term ends twelve twenty-twenty-five. Jenny Ransford, Republican, three-year term ends twelve twenty-twenty-four. Melissa Coaklin, Republican, two-year terms end twelve twenty-twenty-three. Kevin Bell, Democrat, one-year term ends twelve, twelve, twelve twenty-twenty-two. April twenty-twenty-two, Melissa, Republican, resigns from park board because she is not, she is on the town council and to comply with the Indiana Code. Danielle Schauburg, Republican, is appointed to finish Melissa's term, Republican term. May twenty-twenty-two, new park board ordinance is adopted to comply with the Indiana Code. January twenty-twenty-three, Melissa Coaklin, R, is now clerk treasurer and no longer on the town council, is appointed to take Kevin Bell's Democrat spot since his term is up. July twenty-twenty-three, Ken Miller, Democrat, passes away, and Heather Lewis, independent, is appointed to finish his term, the minute say until twelve twelve twenty-twenty-four, but should be twelve twenty-twenty-five. Since Melissa was appointed for a Democrat spot, here's the current park board, Melissa Coaklin, Republican, term ends twenty-twenty-six. Heather Lewis, term ends twenty-twenty-five, independent. Jenny Ransford, Republican, terms, term ends twenty-twenty-four. Danielle Schauburg, term ends twenty-twenty-three. Current Danielle's position, Republican, needs to be appointed at her next meeting this Tuesday, and, um. Danielle, this is, this is what I put in, she's done a great job, and did get a full four-year term since she took over from Melissa's term. She is ask, asking to be reappointed for, 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 uh, four-year term. Now. From what I interpret, the town council does the appointment, not the, not the town council president, from what I read out at ordinance. So, Bush is up right now for that replacement, and it has to be a Republican. So. I'm opening this up for discussion amongst the four of you, of the four of us, um. What do you want to do?
Uh, ask me, Republican.
How would it have to be a Republican?
But we got a Republican going out in twenty-four.
When you have three Republicans on the town, on the town council, right, or town council, park board right now.
You only have two Republicans on the park right now, me and Jenny, Heather's independent.
Heather, Heather's independent. So Danielle, you're saying you're Republican, Heather Lewis is an independent, Jenny Ransford's Republican, and Danielle Schauburg's a Democrat?
Oh, why Danielle, so she's, her term ended up at the end of the year. So technically, technically, right now, I'll, I'll just, I have the ordinance, so this is the ordinance from our website on shoburg dot I N O G O. The board shall be composed of four members, the president of the town council shall select the regular members on the basis of their interest and knowledge of parks and recreation, but no more than two members shall be the same political party. So.
So it's gotta be Democrat then?
Oh, it can be another independent, you just, you just can't have more than two of whatever it is, yeah.
So it's gotta be independent or?
Correct.
You had a, uh, application, did you?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I thought we was giving one of yous.
I'm sorry, they're in.
You're good. I was already, they gave it to Liz today, and Liz gave it to me. But, I mean, Danielle may not be Republican, you, you know, she's.
Yeah, that's, we, we checked into the voter, the voter registration, and said she would, yeah, voter reg, said she was a Republican, so. She served as a Republican, so. And she asked to be reappointed, so. So are you saying that?
We've got something mixed up here then, I mean. There's no way that, uh, without even remotely lines up again.
I'm just taking what I found out in the minutes and researching.
What's it was, uh, this Kevin Bell, was it, was he independent or Democrat?
He's a Democrat.
He's Democrat?
Yeah, Melissa, Melissa in January twenty-twenty-three wrote this Kevin Bell, because his term, his term is up, and he was a Democrat.
But when you, when you're replacing it, it doesn't matter what the person is before you, you're just replacing that position, it's not like, oh, that person's Democrat, so a Democrat has to fill it, the rules don't state that, the rules state just two members of the same.
This'll just make the board legal at this point in any instance, if there was three on there.
Well, the way it stands right now, you got three Republicans on there and one independent, so you're.
There's only, there's only three board members right now.
Yeah.
Right?
Two Republicans, one independent.
Thank you, okay.
Well, there is, there is as of right now, right, so that's why you need to reappoint, you need to appoint a new member.
Well, I'd say since Kevin applied, he's a Democrat, he fits the criteria, he's on the floor, uh. I have no problem.
And I'll just, let me go ahead and make, read the rest of this, so there's no confusion. Upon the establishment of this board, the terms of the members initially appointed shall be for four years. As of July tenth, two thousand, a member shall, shall serve in a staggered term, example, one member shall serve until January two thousand two, one until January two thousand three, one until two thousand four, one until two thousand five. The president of the town council shall make the initial appointments within ninety days of the adoption of the regulation. Thereafter, as the term expires, each new appointment shall be made by the president of the town council for a four-year term. All terms shall expire on the first Monday of January, but an appointee shall continue in office until his successor is appointed. All reappointments to the board shall be, shall be made by the president of the town council by the first Monday in April of each year, and the incumbent shall continue to serve another four-year term. If a vacancy on the board occurs, the president of the town council shall appoint a member for the unexpired term. Ordinance passed two thousand, well, originally nineteen seventy-five, and then again in two thousand.
So you have no problem Kevin Bell going on for?
No.
He was the one that put it in, but it's your decision.
Well, you really need, I, I mean, I think there should be a Democrat put back on it.
Yeah, we're all agreeing with that.
Is there an opportunity for public comment to be?
There will be. Now, I had Terry Modest review this that I just said to you, because I was a little uneasy with this, and I wanted his opinion on this stuff. Cause the problem we got. It says Indiana Code says you cannot, you can only have two from one party on the park board. And I know Melissa's gonna come and blute on this, but Melissa was put on wrongfully, as she was a Republican, replaced Kevin as a Democrat. Now, I sent this to Terry, because I wanted to, I don't know any Lee Wood. He says, Jay, I researched the park board question, the appointment that was made whereby it was a Republican instead of a Democrat, this is in violation of Indiana Code, so therefore is void. I believe that the person is to be removed from the board, that appointment should replace them, of course, it needs to be a Democrat. So what he's basically saying, what I was asking him, with the problem, and he's saying that Melissa went on there illegally, and she should have, if she, uh, it should have been a Democrat who placed her, replaced Kevin Bell instead of Republicans, because then it loaded it up with three Republicans, it had two Republicans on the, on the park board for, I guess, the entire year twenty-twenty-three.
So, let's, let's use an example, and let's pretend that I wasn't appointed, and let's say Jesse appointed, um, Steve Smith back there, sorry, but I called you out, let's say, let's say, I don't know if you're Republican or Democrat, but for, pretend, let's pretend you were a Republican doing, so let's say he did that. Danielle's term is still up at the end of this, right, at the end of the year, so it doesn't matter, I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't matter, Danielle's spot is still up, that spot is still open, correct? Right? And you're saying that Jesse and the last board voted me in illegally?
Yes.
Okay, so then, is there two openings on the park board now?
Well, I'm saying, if we put Democrat in now, we're gonna.
How much money did we spend on an attorney right there to get that information, just to try to kick Melissa off the park board, when she?
I tried to kick her off the park board.
When she?
Four two!
When she's putting in all the work for these, both the whole.
This is the opinion of the attorney.
And Alex, Alex was the one that said that you guys spent too much money on the attorneys last year, and you're spending money on the attorneys, just costing us money, just to try to kick her off.
Alright, alright, let's calm down, but what, but I put him in the Democrat.
Do you want to have the park board to come on there?
Sure, go ahead.
My, my terms feel good on park board?
Yes.
Okay, Melissa's the one out got grants for the park board to do ADA stuff, okay, Melissa's the one that reached out to the contractors to do that. She's the one that helps put on the go-bash, she's the one that helps put on the Christmas stuff, that brings this community together, why are you attacking her?
I'm not attacking her, I'm just trying to get this, I'm trying to get this straightened out, I'm trying to get this straightened out.
You don't care about the community.
I'm trying to get this straightened out, no.
It, you made it, it's personal.
It's not personal, it's not personal.
I'm an independent, you have a Democrat there, why are you trying to get her to do straight now? I mean, the past. Make it right now, she's Republican, Jenny's Republican, I'm independent, Kevin's Democrat, let it be. There was a lot of illegal things done the past year, ten years, thirty years, we're not digging all that, it's done enough, I'm not Republican or Republican, why don't we just appoint either a Democrat or, or an independent and move forward, we're in the middle of this grant, and you want to kick me off of the park board?
I'm not wanting to kick you off, I just want to make sure you don't get sued.
Okay, and make it, and make it legal.
What do you mean, you don't want to make sure they don't get sued?
The point is.
You got law coming in left and right?
I got the floor, the point is, she was replaced by a, she, she replaced a Democrat with a Republican, there should have been a Democrat that went after Kevin Bell was off the park board, not a Republican.
Terry Modest, just.
Can we resolve the issue right now by putting Democrat on?
It's our, we're focused, so why must we want to keep picking her?
Problem solved.
Sounds like the people would forget, getting on there.
She's done a lot for the community, and he doesn't want to fuck the bases.
Take, take a vote.
Hey, watch your mouth, watch your mouth, Louise, watch your mouth. No good riddance.
No good riddance to you.
Just get out, get out, get out.
You're an idiot.
Get out, get out, get out, now.
We're worried about it soon, that'll be soon.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Alright, I'll leave it up to this council, I don't care, I just wanted to point out what I found and what the attorney's determination is. You know what, I said I didn't want to run this show, I don't care about not running this show, it's not gonna hurt my feelings one bit, I just pointed this out. Now, if the majority of these council members want to keep it like it is, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. So.
Kevin Bell in?
Yeah, put Pat in, Pat.
Alright.
Put Kevin in.
I second the motion to, uh, put, Eric, I second the motion to put Kevin Bell on board.
Okay, uh, are we doing this as a, as a board now, or does the president have to, I mean, that kind of goes against our, I mean, I don't care, but.
I can appoint, I'll appoint Kevin Bell. I could appoint, I'll appoint Kevin Bell, Democrat.
Kevin Bell.
So, appoint Kevin Bell on the park board.
So, for the record, you want this left alone and leaving Melissa on there, I wanna.
Yeah.
It don't, I mean. You think I'm after her, I'm trying to kick her off, when I go and compliment her on the minutes? I've sided with her, I've sided with her, I've sided with her when it came to the issue with the keys. I was all for her changing the locks and keeping anybody out of that office that she wants, because I believe she should have all total control over that office. I don't care about that, I don't really care about that, I just wanna make sure. I just wanna make sure that we're legal, and this is going for the record, if the council wants to keep her on. I'm not gonna stand in the way, I just wanted to bring this out, okay? Right?
Yeah, yeah.
There was only one page.
Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just worrying more about the gap, that we may be paying federal, state, and social security taxes for Janet or Custodian, it's not really worth it.
That can be addressed, that can be addressed on the, on the public comment, public comment period. So, you wanna get back to this, let's, I would, I'd like to see a vote, even though it really doesn't mean anything. Um, guys making motions, seconding it, you know, that you wanna keep the status quo, that's fine with me.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, keep the park board as we just decided. As I, uh, Henry Lewis, Melissa Coop, and Kevin Bell, and Kate Mansford. Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know what, make a uniform that way, you can't go on the record saying, oh, Jay South is going after Melissa Coop, because he's not. Wilmer. Quiet, Dan, Wilmer, wait your mom.
I, I just wanted to, Melissa, in the states, there's four, four components on the board, right?
Yes, sir.
There can't be any more than two of any one board.
Yes, sir.
So two Democrats, two, two Independent. It is one, it's nothing against Melissa, if we got three Democrats, three Republicans, leave Melissa on if she's doing more than one.
Yep.
Yes.
We have them, that's where everybody's at, it's not illegal, the last thing you want to do is go to a rally, and then you win, and then you're stacked. We got three Republicans.
It pretty well got decided, Wilmer, so it's, it's, okay. Okay, so let's move on.
Let's move on.
Oh, sorry, sorry, you're right. So can we vote on the bids now?
Bids?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Now, wait a minute, whoa, 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 wait a minute here. Are we paying for this, for the park board paying for this?
We got a twelve thousand dollar grant from the Ball Diamond Community Foundation, it is to pay for, to make the entire Ball Diamond ADA compliant. To put a shelter house, uh, over where the trees used to be, we had a storm two years ago, a tree fell, the plant drowned the area. They had to cut them all, acres came in to cut them all down, so there's no shade. It will include a shelter house, it will include a safety net to protect kids from bow balls coming over, uh, the right field, right field fence.
Alright.
Uh, it will also get a new swing set, because that swing set was hauled out because it was damaged. Um, that would pretty much tap us out of our twelve thousand, I did apply for an additional five hundred dollar grant, I was hoping to get just a little extra money. Uh, but no, no money for the Ball Diamond comes out of the town for any.
Okay, so the grant covers everything in that contract, on the contractors there?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, that is the, the.
Answer my question.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you, Melissa.
Yes, yeah, the, the bids are completely covered.
Okay, as long as the town doesn't, isn't paying one diamond to, I'm not for it.
I make a motion to, to KPIs.
Second that.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. You're mad. Okay. Since we're going back and forth. Got a proposal. For the Union Air Conditioning System at the inner urban. Um, talked to the guy, Scott, that put it together, that did all the work. And Brian Stewart, the president of Yargus Enterprises, I told him, get me a quote, what, they would come in and do the HVAC equipment. Filter changing, belt replacement, cleaning the unit four times a year. I also said, give me a quote on what it would take to make that men's bathroom, you know, it's cold in this, it's cold in this, cold in winter, hot in summer. He said for four hundred fifty dollars, he could correct that problem. So we're looking at one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars a year, that's four hundred sixty-one dollars. Every quarter. Here's copies of all that, pass those down. When he pulled that unit, and he looked at the Vance and R R, they have not been serviced, it was horrible. His fear is that it'll go back the same way again, our guys aren't equipped to be doing that work. And I don't think the tenant is capable of doing that work, so that's why I told him to give us a quote. Um, I got an idea how we can start paying for this, I don't wanna run it by you, it's not on the agenda, but it ties into this, it'll be brief. I think we ought to create a building fund on our town buildings, which would include. The gas station, the bank, the inner urban, and our green building. And take the money that Melissa is getting on the leases. And gotta get on Eagle to get it paid up, and he's two months behind. And, um. Get the other two entities here to get caught up, but it's generating, looks like seventeen hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. I suggest we create a building fund, all the leases that we have, receipt that into that building fund each month. So, when we have things like this come up, you wanna have, it's gonna build up over time. And we could use that building fund for things like this, for maintenance.
Now, do we have to take bids on this, or?
You, I, I guess you could, but it's so low, and they installed the unit, they know what they got. And we could. Um, but I, I, I don't, I, I think it's, I think it's a good deal, it's a lot cheaper than we had the contract with, with, uh, train. That was about thirty-three hundred a year. So this is.
Where did, where did that money come out of, is there still money for the train deal that, that we're not looking at?
If we sell that, we can use that money.
No, I meant like, that we were using for them to come service it, was that coming out of anything particular?
It's coming out of the attic.
Okay.
It's coming out of the attic.
And we actually still have two open invoices to train that I disputed, that I'm kinda refusing to pay, because we, as you guys know, I'm a local York, but. It was like a two-year ongoing battles, and having and fixing it every three months, and then it breaking, and then coming and fixing it, and they billed us like, easily like fifteen hundred bucks at every single time.
I would say if they have impressed it, not to, not to say, not respond, let's just see. You know, if they get in, if they get nasty, then we'll have to maybe visit that. But, uh, this, this is something that can go, I mean, you can consider it later, or whatever, since it wasn't on the agenda, I don't think it's an entertaining motion to create a fund like that. Maybe think, maybe take a look at it, think about it.
Alright, question though, if we do create this fund, could we, if we're in, starting to surplus of money, could you pull money out of this fund for other expenses, or would this just?
I would, I would, when you create the fund, and if you have to do it by ordinance, and I would make the expenses, anything that, that incurred a cost on buildings we have downtown, you own, you could pull apart. You wouldn't have to pull it all out there, but that's what that, that ought to be designated just for those buildings.
Uh, my question is though, could we take money out of that fund for something else, other than these buildings, if we ended, you know, spending it for a while, and it started, you know, that part been in there?
That can be up to the council, you can amend the ordinance and do whatever you want, and yeah.
Uh, Jay, I don't know if some of it, it was, will it matter that the, uh, Sheldon Police Reserve money is technically like, on contract for his police car? Like, will that matter, was that money was originally?
Yeah, you got a point there, yeah, it would, that complicated, I didn't realize it's tight, yeah, it would, I didn't. Yeah, I didn't realize it's tied to that, so yeah, you could use that, that, that's definitely, but I think the rest of them, we could. I mean, you're still looking at.
What?
Fifteen hundreds, something like that a month, I mean, you're, you're talking over a year, it's gonna really accumulate pretty quick. But, but yeah, you could amend the ordinance later, if you wanted to, um, use the money for an emergency, for something else, you could put a clause in there like that.
Okay.
I just, and, and see, right now, it's just going into general finance, getting spent on anything that's appropriate, on appropriated line items. But, we got these buildings, they're old, and I'm just looking to wait, so we don't get hit with something hard, and you got a little bit of money, you have a check to get it paid for, yeah. So what do you think?
We can just take it, uh, take this over, and put it on the, next one.
Okay, you don't, on the, uh, quote, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, we got known backups. I was alarmed when I found out we didn't have a backup, all we was using was our Mini. So I reached out to Black Diamond Equipment, because we, I, when I was quarter treasury, we dealt with diamond tons of times on three-year leases on backups. So I asked this, uh, Joe Van Zandt, he'd give me a quote on a backup, so he gave me a quote thirty-six. Give you all those comments. So, he gave me a quote on a case, five-seven, five-end backup. Um, everybody wants to know what's gonna cost, so it's at, I think I give one of them, I figured, probably my scribbles on there. Uh, estimated monthly payment, two thousand four fifty-eight eleven, that comes to, close to.
Twenty-nine thousand four hundred.
There you go, yeah, you got the one, you got the, you got the one I was, yeah. So it's slightly under thirty thousand dollars a year for three years, but what that gets you, gets you a three-year lease, and. Uh, as long as we don't go over fifteen hundred hours after the three years, uh, we wouldn't have to pay anymore. He took the old machine that we had, and that he, that they were repairing, he went back and looked at the mileage for the, uh, the, uh. Hours on that, thank you, and it averaged under fifteen hundred, easy. So, he was comfortable giving us this option for fifteen hundred, five hundred dollars, five hundred hours a month, or a year. And then I also had him give us a quote, built into this, if they would come down and service it, when it's required, change the filters, change the oil, they come on site to do it, so our guys won't have to do it. So all of that's based on this price. So you're looking at slightly under thirty thousand a year for three years. Now you're probably asking, how are you gonna pay for that? I would like Melissa to get me the appropriation report for just the N V H. I wanna take a look at that, and see if we can afford about fifteen percent out of the N V H. And then take the remainder out of the water, and the remainder out of sewer to pay for this lease. Because it would be used for all three utilities, the water, streets, and wastewater. That would come out to about, I'm thinking about twelve, five each, out of the water and sewer, and then the remainder, like forty-four hundred, forty-five hundred, something like that, would come out of the N V H. But I wanna take a long hard look at that appropriation report, just to make sure we don't get ourselves in trouble.
Uh, you said we don't have a backup, Dustin, why did I just pay off seventy-six thousand dollars in December, was that not a backup?
We got one backup, yeah, it's getting out of the shop.
So this be a second backup then?
Yep. And the thing with the second one, the new one is, it'd be under warranty, so if something goes down, goes wrong, as long as we don't abuse it, they'll fix it, so it won't cost us anything. And we don't need the depreciation on it, like. We got on the one we have now. And then, we got the new one, how did that cost, I mean, we, we got it out of the shop, what did that cost us?
Uh, approximately seventeen thousand fifty dollars, and some change.
Alright, my suggestion with that is. And I want your opinion, you guys, to pay that, I'd say you take fifty, fifty, it's fifty out of the sewer and fifty out of the water to pay that seventeen plus thousand, pay that bill. Justify it, because it's, it's a water wastewater, it's used primarily in water mills there. Where the new one would be more.
All three.
Yes, yes.
And the one we have, Dustin, is pretty new though, right, we just got it two years ago, two, two and a half?
If you paid it off, it's three years old, probably.
Yeah.
Now, at the end of your three years, have you got the option to buy it for not too much money?
Yes, you got option to buy it, or walk away from it, and just incur another cost, and go brand new again.
Is that the one, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five sixty-seven, is that that number, or no?
That's, yeah, yeah.
Is that the residual value?
Since cost, total cost on it, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
That's the residual after three years?
No.
No, that's, that's if you bought it out right, right.
That'd be, yeah, if you bought it out right now.
If you're talking about the end of the year, you should always say that often, so, do you know what that residual value, do you deal with that?
No, I don't.
They shouldn't do it.
Yeah, well.
It's usually eighteen percent on average.
Is that that, up here it says one eleven hundred fifty?
No, it shouldn't say, if you have any backup, it shouldn't say.
It's good. Yeah, I'll meet me on the back. Let's see. Okay, yeah, the total, they say the total cost on it's a hundred and twenty-seven, five sixty-seven, thirty-three.
Uh, I'll just. I would have liked to buy it, but it's not being back, so, I, that's, I sold vehicles for sixteen years, and I was, if you're willing to release to buy it, then that's just.
Oh, you mean, you mean, you mean to purchase it, the option for, yeah, we, town apparently did on this last one. But I always, we always just turned it back into the, back into the dealership, start all over. Yeah, that, that's, that's what we did, now apparently, when I left, they bought, they bought this one, so.
And it has cost thirteen thousand dollars.
Right, because it's out of warranty, and it's going on year four.
Why didn't you do back? We were at three.
Well, here's the thing. We had one, it went down, and it was down for how many weeks?
Yeah, month and a half or so.
Month and a half, that left us with a mini excavator that can't dig very good, well, it digs great, but it.
You can't, you can't load a trailer, you gotta take, y'all load it, go unload the trailer, load it back up, load it back up, yeah.
You gotta wait about six to a half, the second one when it comes to the, uh, crazy bill. You take it out there and dig, now you gotta fill it back in, then you gotta drop the backup all the way back to Sheldon, load the truck, then drive all the way back up, like a spread. And then drive all the way back into town if you need more, and you, I mean, you spend forty-five minutes driving that thing out of the well. So if you gotta make four trips out there in the back, you're looking at it for half a day, just drive.
Right, we get, why don't we invest the trailer, all the way back, forty-two, yeah, why don't we load it up for the trailer, and roll back and forth? Now, and then you, we do the whole open line we did on that.
Uh, Alex, we do get the backup, this was not on the agenda, can I speak to you?
Save the extra amount of money for a backup that be sitting.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna table this, so you wanna table it just to?
Well, it, it wasn't on the agenda on Friday, so I feel like it's not fair to the community to make a very big purchase decision when they didn't have the opportunity. There may have been someone who would have came, had they seen the agenda and seen this on there. So I feel like the fair thing to do is to table it, they, they get the new backup, the old backup back tomorrow. So, can we table it until next month, that way it's properly advertised, and then people will want to come and, you know, argue it or discuss it wherever they can.
Well, I think they can, they can, I see what your point is, um. I'm firmly behind it, one more month's not gonna make or break it, um. I think they're willing to deal with this, I mean, they're, we're a customer, they're not gonna say no, so. Alright, so we wanna table that, and definitely bring it up for a vote on the next board meeting.
Is there also other places where you can get maybe additional votes, where something may be cheaper for a better deal?
Well, you could, but we've had a long, great relationship with Diamond Equipment, they're right up the road. Probably the next one, you're gonna be talking to a different city, you're gonna have to travel farther, which then is gonna. which then is gonna increase the service time for them to come down and service it, you could, you could get another quote, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, we've had a good relationship with Diamond Equipment for years and years, so.
But why wouldn't you get another quote? Just, just to have another quote?
Well, you can get another quote, I'm not against it, I mean, I can if you want, I, you know.
Well, I can also.
Well, I know you can't, but yeah, I know, yeah, I mean, we can, we can get another quote, but.
Well, uh.
Hold on, hold on.
What, what's monthly cost on it? What would it cost per month to, to get a new backhoe?
To get a new one?
What, uh, what would it be to release it a month?
Oh, it's a little less than three thousand, twenty-nine hundred and fifty.
Why don't we put a starter fund, as if we were leasing one, use the old one, put three thousand dollar backhoe on it, if it breaks down, then jump in, you already got mine set in there, and we're not using the five hundred an hour on the backhoe that's sitting around, but we got a four, we just made that a bit. Follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, but you're still dealing with a backhoe that's forty years old, now going on five, and depreciation on that thing, what if we blow a cylinder? What if we do this? We just paid seventeen grand on an old backhoe, it will be a money pit, because it's our primary piece of equipment. Yes, I am.
We're not saying this, I'm saying instead of doing the new lease, act as if we're going into the lease, put the money that we can pay as part of the imaginary backhoe that we don't have, so when this one does break again, then we got the money, you can go into that lease and put this one on-site and wherever you want, and go into that lease, but we're not, but we're not just paying for one backhoe that just got back and got fixed, for a time and time, and literally paying.
No, hey, I'll leave that, we'll table this till next month, and then you guys decide, if you want, if you want to go and solicit another bid, be my guest. I stand behind this one, it, but it ain't gonna hurt my feelings, and one of you wanna do the due diligence and try to find another one, have at it, so I say, I, I don't care. I just know we need to make a decision next month on where we're going with this, because we just spent over seventeen thousand and we were out it for weeks. That thing's, no guarantee that thing might go down tomorrow, we get it here, then we're right back where we're at again, with no backhoe, and we got a big water system, so. Okay, we tabled that, so. Um. One other thing I had, that I had on this agenda is overdue invoices. Um, I got emailed from WTH, uh, invoice is past due, uh, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, it's fifteen hundred dollars, I know what it is. It's for that uh, WTH technology, it's a software.
GIS.
Yeah, it's a GIS software, we still use that GIS?
It's, it's on the uh, computer in the, in the office.
Okay, so we did, so we do use it?
Yeah.
Okay, so what this is, is the software support for that GIS system, I recommend that we, that we uh, make a motion and have Melissa pay this.
So, the reason why I didn't get paid is Dustin and I talked about it, we got a second invoice from another GIS one.
Yeah. The IM GIS is, is uh, basically the same thing, and uh, when is that gonna come up again?
I just paid it in like.
The IM GIS.
Uh, I just paid it in October, maybe September, but it's, I mean, it's.
I, I would, because the W, I would go drop the IM GIS the next step and go with the, the WTH.
WTH, yeah. So, I would like to get this paid and get that sent to them, it's a monthly, or it's a yearly fee. My suggestion, but Melissa can do it however she wants to pay it, but the legitimate would be to take fifty percent out of the water, fifty percent out of the sewer, because the GIS system is for both utilities, so they can share in that cost, that way it helps, uh, helps out each utility, they don't have to bear the over.
That's what I'm trying to explain to you, it's already been paid, but it was paid through the IA or BIS, or whoever there.
Well, apparently, when was that, when did you pay that?
The, the bills came out at the same time, I actually emailed the guy to confirm it, I emailed the guy, he sent me the original invoice, Dustin and I talked about it, the IM GIS can also have support, so we paid it that way. So, if I pay this, we're paying for the same service from two different companies.
Hmm, well, I don't know, I don't know anything about the IMGIS thing, I just know.
I mean, I can, I can get you a copy of that invoice as well, so you can.
You might, Melissa, you might wanna reach out to, reach out to WTH and explain and see what's going on, I just, I just got the emails, oh, I'm saying, I, and I knew what it was, I knew it was for that GIS support, but that's why Dustin's here, I wanna ask him if we still use it, so we did.
Yeah, and the reason why I went with the IMGIS was because I kept the email on Sean Scott to get the GIS put on our phone, and it was delayed and delayed and delayed, and uh, you and I decided to go with the IMGIS to get it on our.
Okay.
On our devices, and then have the WTH.
Just with.
In the.
Yeah, yeah.
In the office.
Okay.
So, it is two vendors for basically the same service, except for the WTH wasn't putting it on our, our devices at that time, so if WTH could put it on our devices, they are the, the main GIS provider.
So, your recommendation's drop the other one and, and stay with WTH and work with them to put it on the?
Yeah, if they are able, because I asked them several times to put it on our devices, and it was, yeah, 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 and then, no, 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 you know, it, it didn't ever come through, and then, we, we went with the IMGIS.
What, what's, yeah, it just, it just never happened.
Right, and, and I'm not sure that the WTH is available.
To do that or not.
Yeah, so if WTH can put it on our device, then we probably should go with them.
Uh, just, just for their presentation, for any future confusion, Dustin and I work very well together, I don't know what half these bills are, so if it comes up, and I don't know what it is, I go directly to him and confirm with him before I pay anything, because the last thing I wanna do is pay for something that wasn't supposed to be paid, so, just, just to like clarify or ease your mind or whatever, like, I always go with Dustin immediately, so when I saw both these come up, I went straight to him and got his opinion on which one needed to be paid, which one didn't happen, and, and got the clarification on what they, they were, so.
Okay, I'm just saying, and I just got this, I don't know why, I don't know how I got it, but it did, and I know it's, it's, it's a bill that we do pay, and my suggestion, we get it paid, it sounds like.
So, I'll reach out to WTH and say, we're capable now to put it on our devices, so we don't have to come into the office.
See if we're still all, I mean.
That's right.
Okay. Alright. I had one more. This is with Westler. We owe them somehow.
I'll just go ahead and explain it.
Okay.
There's no reason for you to say you weren't here, so, in July, Dustin and I had a meeting with EDA, Westler, Thrive, I can't think of who else, there was several people. It was for the EDA project that everybody's familiar with, the expansion to the Joe. Thrive and EDA said, we need to have all invoices turned in, like, basically ASAP, because EDA wanted to reimburse us, yeah, they wanted to reimburse us eighty percent possible. So, Westler was on this call, everybody was on this call. Fast forward, we think all invoices are in, I pay all bills, that way we can then submit to EDA to get our money back. Fast forward to September, I believe it was, and Dustin gets an email from Wester saying, oh, I just found two invoices that I didn't know we had, I had already submitted everything to EDA. So, I reached out to EDA, hey, Wester just found these two invoices out of the air, that they didn't know that they had, now have, one was twenty-five thousand, one was, was that twenty-two, twenty-one?
There's a twenty-one, yeah.
Okay, so twenty-one and twenty-five thousand, that's quite a big chunk. So, when we go to EDA and I tell them, hey, they, they say, sorry, too bad, the deadline was back when we talked to you in July, so now the town is out of that extra money. So, I went ahead and paid the invoices, because I was told by Thrive, pay them, I mean, you gotta pay them, you know what I mean, you can't not pay them. When I paid them, apparently, one of the invoices was an old one, that, that Adam got confused or whatever, and so I paid that invoice twice, so then he emailed Dustin and I, said, hey, you've paid an invoice twice, what do you want me to do with this check? I said, just void the check, I will send you a new check, or just the one invoice, and not obviously the overpayment. That check has been sent, it is paid, that is why everything was kind of confused and stretched out, had we just got the invoices to add that in, initial time of July, maybe we would have got that money back, now unfortunately we can't, but.
But they were significantly tardy on that last invoice.
Absolutely, by several months.
Double invoices on.
Yeah, he's got here, conclusion was that Wester would destroy the double check.
Yes.
And Sherman would, would cut a new check for twenty-one thousand to cover invoice four-two-eight-five-five, which is the easements.
Yes.
So.
And, and, and to be fair, on their part, the EDA grant was never going to cover easements as well, so, that second, it was just that, you know, it, it felt very, I don't know, where do you wanna use, but you know what I mean, like, he, he knew they needed to begin in July, and then, then kinda coming in, in, in mid-September kinda caught us off-guard, because we already presented everything to EDA, so, but no, his, his invoice is paid, everything is, is good. Yeah, we, we do get some back, not from, not from those invoices, unfortunately.
Well, he's saying that we still owe for the, for the easements.
No, that's fair.
And. I, I, I mean, I got it right here, and uh, I don't think.
Call them and just touch base.
I'll call them, and then I'll make a copy of the voucher and drop it in your guys' box, so that you can see.
Cause I don't, I don't want them eating this if they legitimate, and I, I believe him, I mean, he's got it here, and it's for the easements, it's twenty-one thousand dollars, I know we kinda goofed up, but if they destroyed the other check, uh, I still think we owe them money, I really do, um, I think we should pay them.
Can we check the base and make sure that, I mean, we ought to have a bank record on whether or not they withdrew.
Throw them out there twice again.
I mean, there ought to be something that says that they took money from us or not, so.
And just for future, like, had someone just came to me before the meeting, I could have printed out the voucher and showed you, and then we wouldn't have wasted fifteen minutes discussing this tonight.
Well.
That would have been fun.
That's, that's, you know what, now that, that, that kinda stuff like that, I don't want that kind of comment, this was something I took on myself, and I just wanted clarification, I didn't need any opinion on that, so.
No, I, I'm just saying to say.
I understand, I understand, but.
I would have been more glad to provide that information.
So, if you paid the twenty-one thousand, and he wants another twenty-one thousand, I'd be on that boat, I'd be on that boat, hey, you paid me once, paid me twice, that's forty-two thousand dollars.
I'll have him explain it better, I'll have him do some documentation, I really believe we owe the money, but I'll have to do some more research on it, that's fine.
Um, will the town utilize Wester in bearing out this?
They're doing.
Yeah, I think it's just a simple mistake, uh, yeah, I, I don't, I mean, either we paid it or we didn't, I'm sure that we've got, and the bank accounts will show it, everything.
Yeah, I'll get back with him, have him do some more, some more digging.
Accidents happen.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're, they're out there, they wouldn't be in business very long if they were doing people, so overdue invoices. Alright, I'd say let's listen to Melissa's quarter treasure stuff.
Uh, very quick, you've got the claims docket to approve, I passed it, you guys have it, the allowance docket to prove, you've had it the whole.
Uh, the allowance?
Yep, uh, I gave you your monthly tenant report, that's everybody who's paid rent, who has a paid rent for the month, to be anywhere in February, thank you, you just need to make it.
Got that, yeah.
And the only thing I have, I think, on my list is, uh, just don't talk, uh, do it too quick, uh, employee handbook, this was emailed to us by the company that we've used for several years, New Focus HR, November twentieth, here's your new employee handbook, here are your changes, and please give this to every person, distribute this to all employees from the town, have them sign a new employee handbook. Uh, one employee has not signed it, I, I don't know if you guys can make a motion, but I just need that signed to put in the record. Um, if you wanna just make a general motion, then everybody needs to sign it, I, I, everybody, everybody has signed everyone.
I'd like a vote.
Alex, weren't you wanting to, weren't you wanting to make changes on there?
Yeah, we need to, uh, from the handbook I got, uh, whenever everyone handed them out, there was all kinds of pages missing in it.
Can we table that for next month too?
Can you pass that right on here on the floor? Do you want me to reach out to Kristen at New Focus who created the handbook, and like, or do you wanna, do I have to give you her info, and you reach out to her and let her know what changes you want?
Yeah, if you would, if you could, get that, get that to Alex.
Okay, Alex.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah, we'll have an answer for next month, definitely.
So, I just need the approval of the docket, uh, allowance docket, and the.
Did they both get signed?
This one is signed, I just need you guys to make a motion to.
Can.
I'll second it.
Can we get, all in favor, go ahead, I, can we get that, Melissa, can we get that APD voucher registered like over the weekend before the next council meeting or regular council meeting?
Yes, I was, I was trying to start doing that, so.
Okay.
I, I, like, the way that I've done it the past eighteen months is, I pay the bills literally the Monday before, and the whole day of, that way everything is like.
Calling.
Very fresh, and you guys can approve it, that way if something isn't right, you can, you know, change it.
Okay.
So, I just need to kind of readjust my schedule of how I pay the bills and get them paid the week before and stuff.
Hey, could you just, just PDF it too?
Mm-hmm, yes, do you want the allowance docket, or just the, um?
I just want the allowance docket.
Alex, did you second that?
Uh, yeah, I did, yeah.
All in favor?
Alright, alright, yeah, I'd like to get that, like, over the weekend before the council meeting, just to see it.
Uh, and then I just need a claims approval, and I confess everything I have.
I'll make a motion. The claims paper.
Second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, for Alex.
Okay, so we got Dustin on his utility report.
So, is everything on the utility reports self-explanatory, you can read through it, except for the first one, uh, Kennedy's reached out and to possibly assist us with the pot-hauling for the lead service line inventory, is that something you wanna do? And that will be my report, you got, I mean, everything else is just what we did this month, and we did find a couple significant leaks that, that cut us down from a hundred thousand, about fifteen, twenty thousand, we're still losing a little water, but it's significantly better. Most of the stuff you guys went over already.
So, how's time today? KTI, how, how many days you think it'll take?
Uh, I have no clue, um, if he could do ten services a day, probably, we got approximately a thousand a day, so it'll take a hundred days. I mean, it just depends on how quickly they, they work, I mean, there might need to be a not-to exceed or.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see.
You know, you know.
I don't wanna turn a lease like that, you think they'd be willing to do that?
I can talk to them.
See, see what he can do.
Yeah.
Um, the uh, the, the IDEM one with the sanitary survey, um, where's, did you, oh, did you get that fixed?
What is it?
That we got cited for on that valve or whatever that was.
It, it's, it needs to be installed, I've, I've got it, and then, I'll install it before I.
Before you leave?
Before the end of the month, yes.
Okay, take a picture.
I have a lot of work to do out there, I mean, that's, I'm gonna basically be focused out at the wells for the rest of my time here, my full-time here, so. I got that meter to put in and to wire it in our communication, so we can, the mercury switch is out there, the bellows switch, we're trying to then make that through the communication, so we don't have anything that could possibly freeze up and cause our stuff to knock horn in.
I'll get your advice on something real quick too, on the, on the tank, we got it cited, is that the, what the heck is that, that they're trying to tell us?
It's, it's the base, in between the base, uh, the concrete base and the, and the iron base, there's like a small gap, and John, the guy that inspector.
Mm-hmm, John Clark.
Yeah, he could probably explain that a little better, but from what I, I'm understanding, it's the, there's a, maybe an eighth-inch gap underneath it in places that possibly need to be.
Wish you can get in swell.
Crank, crank some grouting in there to, to make it.
Okay. Okay.
And then we gotta throw rock around the concrete stuff, so the, the water don't weep to the, to the concrete base itself.
So, there's a, what, there's a bid, is it for pot-hauling, this is for, for fixing the holes or?
No, 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 this is uh, lead service line inventory, so we have to identify what's, the line coming from our mains to the service, and then from the service to the, to the house.
So, they will identify it for some document?
Correct.
With that fee?
Correct.
But, uh, we, well, um, didn't you have a machine that?
Yeah, and that was on there, that's item one, two, three, four, five, six, the hydro back machine, that would be purchasing that, now, that'd be what he was doing, it would take the place of purchasing.
Also, that, uh, his service take place on a machine?
Correct, which is from seventy to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Correct, which is from seventy to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar machine depending on. How big or how new or, you know.
But the, but.
But we won't have the machine as our own, obviously.
Yeah, but eight, eighteen fifty a day, and say a hundred days, that's like a hundred eighty thousand.
Correct.
That would get over seven or eighty?
Yeah, plus our time and labor. I mean, that's why I'm saying, you guys do the math and see what's.
How how long was, what was this, we should ask, I don't know, what, you know, I mean, on average for?
Well, they said anything less than seven thousand hours is considered, uh. Mediocre to new, you know what I mean, just getting into the break-in stage, I guess, so. The one I had, uh, bid out was a five hundred gallon and it had twelve hundred hours on it.
Kinda like what you're saying, I'm asking for a hydro vac to complete the LSI requirements if KTA is not approved. Can you go in and look at that again for us and try to get a quote on something? I mean, try to see what you can get and have.
Is there a, is there a deadline on what just needs to be done?
Yeah, November first is the, is the deadline for the, to have the spreadsheet complete.
So if you could do that in your to-do list and have that, get it, you know, get it to Melissa.
It does take two people to run the machine, you know what I mean? And, uh, so that would take up our whole work crew.
Okay.
So there, I mean, there's other things that's to be done too, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But that, to me, is the most important, so, but if a leak springs up, they have to go.
Stop, shut down, yeah.
Locates have to be done, you know, there's stuff that has to be done, so. I don't know, it it's, I can go both ways with that, you know what I mean, really, I mean, I'm capable to be on the fence about it, but. Having a firm doing it for us is an asset and then having the asset to do other work, which, I mean, them hydro vacs are awesome machines.
It can be used for more than just this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright, see if you can get something for us and we can bring it with the contract, see what they will do.
I'll leave it to all of you guys.
Not to exceed, okay, okay. Okay, so I can. So I guess we got town marshal. Town marshal report.
Uh, I didn't think you were so good, I wasn't sure that I was gonna do it, so.
That's just, can you just do a double one for next month?
I can do that.
Let's just do that.
I just didn't go.
That's fine. We'll just do that. No, that's alright, hard to perfect, avoid.
Alright, uh, from first of the year to, uh, present, uh, we've had thirty-five runs, thirty medical runs, four, uh, fires and one other, I think it was a trash fire. Um, over the last month, I brought in, uh, the board one by one and kinda showed them some of the concerns I have, uh, with, uh, my five-year plan that I drew up. And, uh, the building, uh, we'll kinda get into that here in a minute, uh. For truck repair for January, the month of January, um, engine five oh one, that's, uh, one pair of execution tools, uh, carries all the extra rope and everything, our backup structure truck. Uh, the windows, uh, wouldn't roll up when it got real cold out, uh, all the windows are busted, so we, uh, took all the doors apart, manually put them up. Uh, the hydraulic cylinder on the cab is busted, it's gonna need to rebuild, we've got it temporarily fixed, sorta kinda, not really. Uh, the hydraulic pump, uh, we actually, uh, found one, uh, on eBay and purchased it. Uh, if I went the other route, it was gonna be about four thousand dollars, uh, so I got that bill with me today for us to look at here in a minute. Um, and it's got a current air leak right now, uh, haven't tore into it and figured out what's going on exactly, but I'm sure that, uh, I'm sure I'll have time tomorrow. Uh, pilot two, the back door, uh, keeps breaking on us, so we've got it duct taped and bubble gum together for now, we'll see what happens. Uh, the windows on it don't roll up or down, so we've got them, uh, manually put up and clamped in for now. Uh, and then the belts for the alternator and the water pump on that thing, I don't, something's wrong with it. Uh, I don't know if, uh, the alternator's, uh, locking up or something, I hope not, cause it's like a seven thousand dollar alternator, I think. But, uh, there's something wrong with it and it's burning belts, we've been through several and several belts over the last month. Uh, about an hour and a half each time we fix them, uh, it's becoming a headache, uh, whenever we're out on a run and we lose, uh, power and then the battery starts draining real quick, so. Uh, that might end up needing to go into the shop if it, I got a fancier belt this time, we'll see if it works or not, if not, uh. I have to take it to the shop, I don't, I'm not, I'm not supposed to pass that, as far as that goes. Cause I mean, a seven thousand dollar alternator, I mean, they can rebuild it before and put for, what it costs to rebuild it. Um, the building, uh, we put, uh, the front and back door, uh, uh, the actual handles put working, we, uh, got one donated to us and we got it put on. Um, the, uh, bays, all the lights are about burnt out in it, we went ahead and, uh, bought a hundred dollars worth of lights, which got the front bay done and not the back bay. Uh, I've got a bill for that as well, uh, and then, uh, where are we at? Um, in the office, uh, I, uh, informed the last board as well, but, uh, the ceiling got wet. We put a new roof on it, we never did anything with it, and slowly but surely came down to the point where we just took it the rest of the way down. Uh, it's letting all the heat out of the firehouse, uh, I think I showed it to most of you guys, I mean. I would like to go in and, uh, use, uh, the fire department budget and, uh, fix it and then, uh, see if you guys agree and versus it, it should be just drywall and screws and mud. And, uh, then it should be up and going, uh, I found, uh, like thirty bundles of insulation in, uh, the attic of the back part of the firehouse, so I've got insulation and everything insulated. So we ought to be good to go as far as I go, so I'd like to start one more project on that, cause that's eaten up the utilities, like there's no more. Um, other than that, uh, I do have a, uh, a pow pest came in, uh, I did find the email, I can't believe it. Uh, they said we have termites in the firehouse. Now, the only way that they can treat the termites is they have to do the firehouse, the wellness center, the water office and the post office. They have to go all the way around it to be able to control termites. Uh, she sent me a quote of that and I, uh, will email it out and print it out, I, uh, didn't think I actually had it. Uh, so it's, uh, the first time cost is fourteen hundred and fifty dollars, so then they come out and, uh, they gotta do like coring or something, drill into their concrete. Drop in tubes, all kinds of stuff, and then, uh, then it's a, uh, re, uh, every year after that is two hundred and seventy-five and then they continuously keep up on it. I don't know if anybody knows anything, but termites are what it takes, but I'm sure it's a mess.
It takes a while.
But, uh, they, uh, they, uh, don't want them spreading everywhere else if they can prevent it, but they said the only way they're gonna prevent it is by going all the way around everything. And I, so if you guys wanna zoom in and look at it from pow pest, uh, that's who, uh, currently does the firehouse water office, probably over here too.
Yeah, probably, I'm afraid it's a spring.
Um, the, uh, hydraulic pump that we put in on five oh one was, uh, two hundred and thirty-three, seventy-three. Uh, that was, uh, ordered shipped, uh, and then we put it in, and then, uh, the lights were ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. I'll send it to you in just a second. I can email that to each one of you guys and print it off if you'd be.
So it's fourteen hundred and fifty dollars?
Fourteen hundred and fifty, it should cover the, we should do the whole, uh, the whole four buildings, all the way around, uh, covered coring, getting it started. I mean, we're not stopping, I'm not stop, I guess you can't stop them, so, and slow them down and get them out of there eventually, but I guess it's a, it's a process over many years. From what she told them, but I, I don't know.
So you got it there for? I think we ought to see what we can do, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't think we need, need to wait on this.
Oh, and, uh, stone later? Yeah, I know, I know, I've been telling them to work, I've known them for years, um. I use them, my brother uses them, a lot of people don't use them.
Well, the interurban head termites briefly, and we used action test control, and it locked about in two years.
We still pay that and there's a.
Yeah, yeah, cause they have to keep, they have to keep coming back treating.
So I think, I think it's competitive rate with other companies.
Yeah.
For all that area, come back and redo it all?
It's been here and there.
I mean, we have no option over that, uh, post office, I mean, we either do it or we don't treat them.
Yeah, you're gonna have to treat it all. My suggestion is we, we vote, we do this, and we split the cost up, try to. The general fund can afford a little bit of it and then you could justify using water and wastewater money because you're treating the water utility. The water, the water office is houses, that's how the water, wastewater gets its money, cause you bill and you collect the money. So you could use part, you could take a portion out of the water sewer and then some out of the general, and I'd pay it. That's, I'll make a motion, we do that, I'll make a motion, see if we can, if the general fund can afford a third and a third out of the water utility, a third out of the sewer utility justification. Because you're treating the water office also and, um. As a good neighbor, I guess, with the post office, no need to try to, you know, get two or three hundred dollars out, I mean, unless you wanna try, that's up to you. But it just needs to get done quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, ask my motion.
Uh, I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alex, do you vote on that or do you abstain?
I, I got it through the fire department, so I don't know.
Yeah, you probably.
I'd sit out of that one.
Yeah.
You have two invoices to offer?
Yes. I got one for ninety-nine, ninety, uh, that's for all the light, uh, light bulbs and stuff, Aaron said it was much brighter in there today. And then, uh, uh, for the hydraulic pump, it's, uh, two thirty-three, seventy-three. He handed down.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was a blessing to find that off eBay, I don't know if they didn't know they had it or not, but it works great.
I believe mine keeps, like.
Yeah.
Obviously, a motion doesn't take these people.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Motion made, second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Alex, that reverse to you or reverse to Children's Volunteer Fire?
Children's Volunteer Fire, please, thank you.
Is it open for fire?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, well, now we got public comments.
Once again, I'm gonna just bathroom first.
All hands to the bathroom.
Go ahead and get ready.
Liz and I did get some of the public comments dropped off, I wasn't sure what the protocol was, like, so if I can just take clarification, do you guys want me to copy those and give those to you in advance? Do you want me to bring them here, or do I do?
Think what we have on the, what we've had on the, uh. Bottoms to have a B seven days prior to the meeting, so I think we just, could we just stick with that, go going forward, not to them.
That's what they did, I just didn't know what you want me to do with them, like, do you want me to hold them and keep them until like the night of the meeting, or do you guys want me to make copies?
Could you make copies and send it to all of us, that way we can, if we try to get some answers?
So for the ones from this past two weeks, I did make copies and stapled them, but in the future, then I'll make sure that you have copies in your boxes.
Yeah. Alright, who wants to volunteer to read these comments, you wanna do it this time? You don't wanna do it?
No, they didn't teach me cursing in school.
You wanna do it, Aaron?
No.
You don't wanna do it? Well, I did it last month, I guess I'll do it this month. I think, I think going forward, we'll do it this time, this time, and I think from now on. We'll have whoever wanted to, that has a comment to speak on their own behalf and and read their own comment. Or their own question, but first, we'll, we'll go ahead and do it this way this time. Paul Montgomery. Could our town attorney be present for an upcoming meeting and periodically at meetings to address town concerns and issues?
Why not?
He can.
We gotta pay for it, but.
We just char, we just get charged for it, um, normally, it's, if it's just a specific, you know, something specific. Then we definitely would have him, um.
Can you see, can you see what it would cost to do like a quarterly even, just, uh, one time through the quarter or something, that we could, uh, let people know, like, yeah, well, we're just gonna be here.
I mean, let's see what the rates are and, it'd be good to have him here sometimes anyways. Yeah.
Do what, I'm sorry?
Kind of counsel, the commissioners do that.
Yeah.
So you want me to see what the rates would be if we had?
Yeah, see what he, what he would charge quarterly.
I just saw that we had asked several things and you guys said be more law, uh, your lawyer, your county lawyer, we would have to answer those. So we're just kinda waiting for responses.
Yeah.
And haven't gotten anything, uh.
That's why I pushed it with that make, with the contract with, cause I knew that was timely with Dustin, I sent it to him immediately and had him review it, so we would know.
Well, I just liked tonight, you had contacted him about the Republican and all of that. So I was hoping maybe if you were gonna contact him, you would ask about some of the things we had brought to the attention.
He can answer, he can answer, he can answer that for you.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm back. Why, what's the question?
Well, I, it, when we, the first, so Brad and I have been to the last few meetings and, um. There've been lots of people speak up about some town concerns and issues, but it wasn't really got me anywhere, so I've been typing up. But you said, make sure you type them up, put them in the mailbox, I've been doing that after every meeting, but we really haven't gotten much response for those. And I did hear that you guys were going to the lawyer to talk to, so I was kinda hoping we would finally hear some information about. The police station, misuse of funds and, uh, the janitor job, some of those things have been on that document each month.
Yeah, Aaron and I met with, uh, Mr. Modest, uh, Wednesday and, uh, we discussed, uh. The entry of the town hall and, uh, he said. Best thing to do is sit back away and see what the courthouse, or the prosecutor does with the case.
Is that the protective order case?
No, that's a whole different issue, he's talking about, uh, the entry into the.
Mr. Price.
Into the court.
Court's office, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that stemmed from something else, didn't it?
Supposedly, yeah, on my behalf.
Okay.
But, uh, he said, you know, the best, see what the prosecutor goes through with the, and we'll go from there with, with that, you know. If they, if they throw it out and they find there's nothing, there's no law been broken, then, I mean, if they throw it out, then it's not really much. Work, you know, but after then it goes through, then, then we're gonna, you know, take it from there with the lawyer.
The prosecutor won't do anything. So is there, if the prosecutor knows about this, has there been like, uh, twenty-four, five, about this, uh, did you follow the judicial?
I did.
Okay, so this is, is that being called it?
So that's up to the prosecutor, it's in the prosecutor's hand, yeah.
Okay, so it's where you want this.
But you all could fire him, right? You all could fire him, if you think there's some misconduct, you guys could dismiss him from his duties, right? It's not all in the prosecutor's hands. It's, it's up to, yeah, the council could fire any employee anytime. Yeah, especially if he's severely.
Which is what happened with the credit card misuse that the young lady was.
Address, address, address that now.
Uh, yeah, we also discussed the credit card use and, uh, let me see, I've got one. Uh, the one at the, with O'Reilly's. Uh, Mr. Modest said he, uh, actually got a letter from O'Reilly's and they stated that. Mr. Price has a personal account with O'Reilly's and he also has a police account. And they put the, they said, he said he read the letter from O'Reilly's and they put it on the wrong account, it's mistaken. He said he seen the letter, he read the letter, had it from O'Reilly's, and said it was mistaken. And the other, uh, charge, he said. If you wanted to take it to court, you would, basically, all your witnesses would be the prior town board. Who already voted and said that, you know, they've, all right, they cleared it and everything, so. Basically, they're, I mean, they're gonna testify that what they did is the right thing and, uh, you know, I mean, there's not much. We, we can do, you know, cause I mean, they're all gonna testify that, that it leaves what they did was the right thing, so, I mean.
And we've taken that here, those two things going forward, the clerk treasurer office has a new lock on the door and. Only Melissa has keys to it and the credit cards are now all accounted for.
Excuse me?
And the credit, town credit cards are all accounted for and asked to be signed out and all of that, moving forward, right?
Correct.
So then, we, I appreciate you, or the town should appreciate you asking those questions, so.
Okay, and with, uh, I think somebody said, uh, with the bingo fund, wherever, that. That's like five oh one. Was it five oh one C three?
Yeah.
Five one C three. And, uh, basically, the town has, we have no council of what goes in, what comes out. And I said, I asked Mr. Moxley, I said, if those funds were being used for something they weren't supposed to, cause it's in the town building and by town board. He said, the town is not liable if there's any misuse of funds.
What about the, in the police station, I don't know if other entities house in there, brought up about the utilities being paid by the town?
Yeah, I do.
Other entities in there with that one of them?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. Uh, the, um, brown baggers were in the, in the building that the police station's in now for, I think about two years. And we let them have it for rent free. And the town picked up all the utilities on the building all the time they were in there. So we had a history of picking up the utilities in that building. The town has always paid the water, the water bill. We used to have a doctor's office, now the community club and the library is all, the town has always picked up the water bill because there's only one water meter that feeds the entire building. So the town has always incurred that cost for the library, doctor's office, community club now. Brown baggers when they had it, now that the police office, the police station has it too. So there's a history there, uh, the town picking up the utilities. So I don't know if that answers your question or.
I think so. As long as the town would be okay with that, you know, as long as all of you know that they're all, that they're all paying.
Right. Past councils that I was, clerk treasurer was always voted for. They signed the vouchers and paid the bills, you know, for the utilities for years and years. We just now have again. I have a problem with it because of the history that it is. Like I say, the water bill, the town has always absorbed that cost even when it's rented out with big events. And when the fish fries used to go, I mean, old fashioned days. Uh, that's a good example too. The old fashioned days used this building constantly and they never paid rent. We didn't allow them to pay rent. It was free and then we absorbed those utilities. And that month, June, it's things electric with it, with the air conditioning going, fanning in and out, the bathrooms. We, it takes a big hit, but the town's always paid it, so.
I think the other couple things I'm doing is all of the top of my head.
I got it right.
There you go. Um, was the janitorial conflict of interest thing? Or the worker getting paid not at the person actually doing the jobs like her? That, and, um, but wasn't really doing because she was disabled, this, I.
Hey, I'm, you know, I'm not really exactly sure all that. I mean, well, I got her, I mean, every time I've been in the town hall, it's clean. Every, every time I've been here, it, it's clean, you know, um, I've never seen who actually does the cleaning, you know, I mean, I mean, I've heard.
She gets disability or somebody gets disability. The wife does a job, the husband gets disability and there's some relation or something.
They, she will, I think she was related to Brad.
Brad, yeah.
Yeah, he's no longer on the board.
So is that a, is that a polyeponet from the town of Hay? Somebody that's, so that you, she didn't get in trouble for the disability?
When we had, when we had, when we had our exit conference. When we had our exit conference for my audit for twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one, that was asked. Field auditor asked me about this incident. And I said, just pretty much what Jared said. I didn't see her clean it because I was never there. I can't say that she did. I can't say she didn't. They looked at it, it was on a checklist and they just went like that and went on.
Why, why wouldn't we know if you cleaned that up so it's not on the next?
Well, it won't be on the next audit because they didn't have anything to do with it. They didn't find, they didn't have a finding on it. So it's not a real current.
I would love to ask you again.
Well, yeah. Well, no, but I mean, there was no finding. They didn't even know it on the audit report. So if there's no finding, they're not gonna come back and look at it again. It's a dead issue as far as their concern. In fact, they said that, I got chastised on it. They said, that's what happens in these small towns. The clerk treasurer or somebody from the town gets a grievance and it's something that happened maybe two years ago. They wait till we have the audit and then they want us to go and do something about it. And she yelled, then yelled it. She's like, we're not the audit police. If you've got a problem, you need to report it at the time it's happening, not two or three years later. And we get it here to all of them.
Well, I think that's, I think that's what we're trying to do.
Trying to avoid that, right, right, right.
With this new org.
Right.
And with this new push for improvement.
Right.
And we're just trying, you know, it's a lot easier to tell the truth.
Right.
And we're trying to be transparent.
Now.
And the truth, and the truth was told in a previous meeting, meaning that Alex and Melissa were both women. Where the lady was point like asked how long she'd been doing the job for her husband and she said five years.
That sounds about right as far as when, when all that happened, when they hired or he was hired or.
The only other thing that they were saying was five thousand dollar payments.
Do you, Paul, Paul, you want this second question answered?
Sure.
What steps have been taken to resolve town ordinance? And you got down here violations for abandoned structures, buildings, trailers, lots, houses vacant, dilapidated and deteriorating.
And I took that straight from the ordinance.
Okay.
I read the ordinance and where is that? I just copy it basically.
Now, let me tell you my spin on it. If we go and we try to do every lot in this town, we're not gonna have enough money. My thing is, why we got these question forms now? Just basically like complaint forms. If a neighbor complains about a dilapidated property that they think is bothering them, then I think we should take it. If somebody's willing to sign their name to it, like you did with this, then we can investigate it and see what we can get done. If there's a house two blocks down the road and that neighbor don't have a problem with it, I don't think the town should take that on and take that responsibility.
Are we as a town going to advertise that? Any complaints you have with, or you want to then build this out and turn it?
That's kinda what, that's my hoping by word of mouth. I mean, it's starting to take effect here. But because Melissa, these are on the, these are available at the office, aren't they now? A complaint form?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. You might, I don't know, somehow maybe, I don't know, put it on the website too.
Well, I would just, well, that is on the website.
Okay.
I, I would, if you need to be specific to that ordinance, I would, we don't wanna read, we don't want your workers reading through all that.
No.
You just want the, the people, the ones that the people are complaining about.
Now, see, that's, that's just me. Uh, these, these other three may have a different idea. I'm just saying.
I had four in my head right now.
If you complain about, if you're willing to complain and sign off that you're, that, and you don't care whether your neighbor gets mad at you or not, well, then I think we ought to take a hard look at it and start trying to resolve it.
Well, that's the only way as a town as a whole, we're gonna improve.
The only thing I can say is, we can't afford, we can't go in and do every lot in town and never get, we never, we can't afford it. But systematically, we could.
But over the years, you guys haven't had any, like, who's came to the end and complained about it, she's said that, so.
Well, not that I know of. But going forward, going forward, now you've got a system, let's do it.
So Matt writes tickets for it. I guess so.
I tell you what, no comment on that. Let's just keep this.
Excuse me, sir, I'll comment.
No, you're not, you're not gonna comment. I'm warning you once.
What?
I'm warning you once to be quiet.
Action.
Be quiet. Shoot me all you want. I'm gonna warn you one time, sir, one time. Don't talk, we're not, we got rules of conduct and one of them is not intimidation and not putting other people down.
I'm not disrupting you.
You made a comment disparagingly about our town marshal and I am not gonna put up with it, sir.
I can make a comment under the First Amendment of the Constitution.
I don't care. We got rules and I'm telling you, if you keep it up, I will have you escorted out of this building.
Well, go ahead and do it. You'll get sued.
You keep it up, I will. Brad, get him out of here.
What are the rules? How many?
Get him out of here. Get him out of here.
Okay, he got one. Then we can get two more because I thought that was the rules. You get three times and then you're out.
Get him out of here.
You guys, you guys.
Get him out. I'm trying to do a job here for this, this lady with her complaints.
You're a police officer. You should be ashamed of yourself.
He's, he's violating.
It's my right, sir.
And there's Alex, he, he thinks this is funny. He's sitting on the porch. He thinks it's hilarious.
I don't think it's hilarious.
Well, he does.
I thought we're trying to be, going ahead with people's comments. That was violating what this woman has done. This, this woman has done the process. So let's give her her say. Let's give her time here. Does that satisfy everything for now?
I still feel like there needs to be a way that you're saying place complaints.
Yes.
Where to be placed and what form do we use?
Well, it would be this one, the desire to speak in a meeting.
Desire to speak. You don't want people coming in here and talking about the law specifically addressed on the law. I thought you wanted it turned in so that Officer Price could go check it out.
Well, as long as you sign, yes, yes. On certain situation like that, yes, I don't think that should be brought up in the public, no. But as long as he's got, that, this will initiate the process to start, yes. Yeah, to answer your question.
I said, everybody, you got an issue with.
You need to fill it out.
And you need to complete some form at the.
This, this, this'll do it. To me, this'll do it. We just won't bring it up in a meeting, but that'll initiate the process, okay?
So those were mine, too, right?
Okay. We got Brad Montgomery. It's Brad Montgomery here. Brad Montgomery, he said, what specific audit infractions have been addressed and improved upon? What I got, what we got going on with that? Hey, hey, hey. We can't hear. Well, I didn't hear him. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear him. I just now.
Can't, you got to be very lenient here.
Alright, I will. I got sidetracked. I'm sorry, sir, I got sidetracked. I'm just trying to answer these people that live and pay taxes in this town. I'm gonna tell you right now, everybody, everybody just be quiet. Well, try to treat everybody the same. I'm warning you now.
Warn me again.
I'll warn you second time. Third time, get out of here. Get him out of here. Get him out of here. I'm tired of this stuff. Now, I mean it. You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna respect the people that live here. You're gonna respect the people that live here. Sir, I want to address your question.
Alright, look, if we can't finish this, if we can't finish this, sir. I second the motion.
Sir, after meeting, I'll address these for you. I apologize that you didn't get.
Can I get mine addressed next month?
And then yours. I'll, I'll, if you want, I'll stay over and if you want to.
No, that's fine. I can.
Sure?
I'll stay over too.
Right. Yeah. That's why I, that's why I'm trying to be diligent. That's why I'm trying to be my due diligence and respect that.
All the court and everything we've done so far to the next meeting and break it down for you so you can see.
But if you guys have made rules for these meetings and you voted on those, they need to be the same for everyone. If it's three strikes and you're out, not one strike and you're out. It's gotta be the same for everyone, all across the board.
I agree. But I feel like we're in control of this right now, so, uh.
I agree.
I mean, we're not doing any good right now.
Uh, Mr. Reed, I have the number of women that you guys. No, no, we're, I think they're adjourned, but I'm just saying, you know, we'll make sure we see the address at the next meeting.
Well, I don't wanna sit here for three hours and we don't win. I just want an answer to a damn question. I've been asking for twenty years.
Well, I'll, I'll talk.
I'm serious. I've been twenty frigging years I've lived here, come back, walk my house, had the same issue with the damn tree. If I'm the fellow in my house, now what's the town gonna do about it? The town, you take the same spark out of it, it's the same, nobody, you can say it's it, it's in it, it's in the ground too. But it's still my grief. But you guys came out and not, but the town workers came out and killed it. They knew that. Gem Ward, the town, whatever he made there was whatever.
Wilmer, how do you, what, what, what's your proposal? What?
I want it treated down before we walk out of my house. It's costing the house and all, it's costing all of it.
You just want it down?
Yeah, yeah, just down. Without hitting my house and not getting rid of it. Then hit the house, man, it's a whole thing.
I'll tell you what, let's write his address down and get a price. Get a price for the meeting, next meeting. Here, get a quote.
Alright, Tyler?
Yeah.
Alright, that's fine. That's fine. You guys just take care of it. That's fine. I'm not trying to tell them to walk. I'm not trying to cost the town a lot of money. You guys can, you guys can knock it down. I'll take it.
While I'm, while I'm here, right before you convene, I would like to put back on the agenda for next month, the rules of the form that we had originally, not the ones we adopted two years ago, the ones I presented. I wanna re-bring those up at the next meeting, first thing on the agenda. And I wanna see if we got a form and pass those. That way it will set everything straight.
Yeah, it has to be equal for.
It'll be equal. That's what I'm suggesting.
If you need it, then you're, you're, you know, probably already held back. You know, if you're being involved in it, the others need to kind of track you.
Right.
But that's hard to be, to keep track of. If you're involved in, then they need to kind of be aware of the cause of.
Right, let's just, yeah. I just, I just wanna make sure these get answered. I, I really do. I mean, you talk about transparency and trying to listen to the public and that's what I'm trying to do. I mean, I really am. And I apologize because I, I'll stay over if you want. I'll help you.
Well, they can do this next month.
Okay. This is Montgomery. That's, I, I think I can answer.
I'll, I'll bring the honor and everything.
Okay.
Big, I think when, when something happens here, this was not funny. There was nothing funny about it. There was nothing funny about two guys going in there to clerk's office, yet he laughed at both incidents. It's unbelievable. He's representing this town now. So I don't see anything funny about either, either of these things that's happened. Not tonight, not right now.
That's not hard to act in an orderly matter, I mean.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. I mean, that's all I'm asking. And the thing that's with this.
I don't see anything funny about it.
Here's the thing, we've addressed it. We've addressed it. So it's up to the prosecutor's office. Dustin did, I don't know if Dustin, but Jared did, Jared did worry.
I just don't see any of this that went on tonight or that going in her office is funny. And yet Alex seems to think it is. He sits up here in front of everybody, represents the town and laughs about the situations.
Well, I can't do anything about that. I'm sorry. I'm not Alex, I'm me. I'm gonna be honest with you. I wouldn't have done it. But then again, when I was clerk treasurer, I didn't care who came in my office. Not putting it on her. She had a problem with it. I understand that. That's why I was all for her, getting her locks changed. Had no problem with that. She controls that office. Who she wants in and out of there, I respect that. And I'm glad she changed her locks and I was all for it. That's all I can say.
There should be an expectation. I don't, I don't wanna see this side of it happening. When this initiative is occurring, you had Alex saying that he was laughing the whole time, like that was funny. And I think that's part of what she's talking about. It doesn't have anything to do with.
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't speak for Alex. I can't answer for Alex. But he's, what am I gonna do? Put him over my leg and spank him or what?
He wants us to act a certain way though.
Well, I mean, what do you want?
He wants us to act a certain way to me.
He is an elected official. I don't know what else I can do. No one can do, you can't, you can't censor somebody. Now, he's up for election in three years and eleven months, then that's when the voters will decide whether, if they think that wasn't, that that was horrible, then they have a chance to take him out and vote him out of office. I mean, that's what elections are for. If you're, if you're not happy with this in three, four years, then just vote him out. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I really don't. If I had an answer, I definitely would give it to you, but I don't know. He's not a deploy. He's an elected official. Is his conduct not what you like? Well, apparently it's not.
I'm, I'm, I'm his action speaker and tell him I'm good with that.
Hey, well.
Well, I think she's confusing.
Now, I'm hoping, I'm hoping with this interaction that, that we're trying to be a little bit open. And like the first meeting we had, when I got accused of shutting everybody off and I wouldn't allow anybody to speak. Well, I had, I wanted to have a reorganization meeting so we could have our present vice president, so we could conduct business like we're doing now and have engagements with the, with, with the public. So. One last question, even though we're way out of, we're not going by the forms or anything. One last question, even though we're way out of, we're not going by the forms or anything.
There really should be an expectation of decorum on both sides of the table, love. And if we, if, if the public is expected to remain quiet...
I agree, I agree with you, man.
Then you guys as elected officials should show...
I agree with it.
We should be able to expect our professional...
I agree with it.
From, from you guys.
So that's why I would like to reintroduce that rules of decorum and try to see if we can get that adopted. Because it sets the standard for what we expect out of the public and what the public expects out of us. And I have to agree with you on that. We need it going forward. So hopefully that'll get adopted. I think that's all we got.
Yeah.
One hundred percent, sir. One hundred percent.
I don't understand. I don't understand why the marshal, when I tried to ask him a question, he said that I am a man without integrity. And that's personally insulting. I just want to let you know that. I just want to let you know, shouldn't hate that or, you know, I'm not trying to call for his job. He's an army veteran. I respect him to a certain extent. But I, I stepped over my grandmother's grave to begin covering this small town. And the thanks I get for it is being said that I have no integrity. I said that.
Let's, Isaac, Isaac, no, Isaac. Will you take me up on my offer and, and we get together on some of these issues and we could talk and I could try to...
Yeah, I want to talk.
Answer that.
I want, I want this municipality to be like Himeric, to be like Southwest, to be like Norwegians. Boring, where when I try to write it, it's like bleeding blood from a stone. Here it's too easy.
Well, let's just, let's try to work it to make boring, okay? Should I contact you in a couple of days and we set something up and we go?
No, you're saying that, just for me personally.
Okay.
For me personally, just talking.
Okay, because I don't want to hold any, I don't know how you grudges against you. I mean, I was mad when you did what you did, but you and I have talked, but life's too short. Let's move forward and make positive things, make things happen.
I don't want the marshal resigned or to be an army veteran. I think he might be one of the best choices for marshal. But I'm not going to take that from him, okay?
Well, we're going to put these rules in place and everybody will follow them. And I think we'll get along going on. Now, is this working out with the public comments?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
Would, would you ask the public rather have one meeting where it's not water talk, it's not park for talk, it's not all this and the other? It's just strictly for this? That way we're not here until nine or...
I like that. I, we, we've talked about that of having like a second Tuesday in the month or like a fourth Tuesday in the month, fourth Monday in the month and have just for public comment. Now, we wouldn't want to follow it like this, you know, and have it like a week before. I mean, if, if we want to go, again, I'm one of four. I did, I would, I would donate my, make sure that I had that time available for public comment on one meeting a month, like the fourth whatever in the month. And just like what Melissa said, have it only for public comment, no business.
I think that your town needs to...
Jasonville does that? Okay.
I think your town still needs to have a gathering, so are you are not going to have the...
I'm not, I'm not saying for that moving forward. Because then we'll have two plus a month of weekends or nine. I'm just saying like maybe coming up in March or April, select one day where it's kind of like a, we'll call it a public hearing or whatever you want to call it. Where you invite the public, let them speak, get their frequencies out, you know. You can still use your forums, yeah, a town hall, just an open town hall where an open discussion is made. That way the people who don't want to stay here until nine every night still have a topic to...
Well, in that way, that way we could, we could have a business meeting the second, like we're doing the second Tuesday month. Wouldn't take public comment. It'd be strictly for business. So we get our business done. And then have two weeks later, a public comment, don't, general business would be passed by the board. It would be just for public comment. That way it would shorten the time.
When your business is conducted though, if the public, like Mr. Sam, if he had a suggestion or question about something with the water, he should still be allowed to bring that up because that's still his taxpayer dollars. That's, you know what I mean? Like with the backup, just because that's not at the public forum, then he should still be able to speak up if he has questions about the water.
Right, so you want things to...
You can't, you can't close it out. I'm just saying for, for this specific...
Why don't you all do it one quarter?
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to do it once a month?
Well, they still wanted an option of getting every, that, right, meeting, not just say, okay, this is...
So you don't want to, you don't want a public meeting just for comments once a month, then? You're talking just doing it by quarter?
If you started out with once a month, eventually that, with that time span, it surely be, you know, as, as they...
Well, I would think, I would think, yeah.
That time span would increase and eventually maybe it would get down to just once a quarter or once every six months and...
Why not schedule one for March? See how far along you get during the meeting? And then maybe you won't need a reason for a second one, or maybe only ten more. You know what I mean? Like who knows what's going to happen, but...
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking for that idea. Put that, we'll put that on the agenda like we've been done, a public comment. Let's just see what we get and then we go from there.
So are you going to extend this request for the next meeting?
Yeah, anything you got, like that setting.
If there's things for tonight that they have questions about.
Yes, yeah.
They would get them on the board from there. You guys will address them at the next.
Yeah, if we can do it a week before, if you can get it a week before the meeting. That way it gives us time. We can go through them and see if we can get answers, just like I did with Mr. Montgomery. I mean, I, I know we researched it just like Jared did for your, you know, it takes a little bit of time. So if we had a week or two to look at that, that way it's not kicking the can down the road and it gives you a legitimate answer to your question. Which I didn't see and I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming anybody from the past. But I know that the can got kicked down the road so many times and I don't want to see that happen. I mean, it gets stuff done and we need to address the concerns of, of citizens of this town, so.
Amen. I'm still getting that can kicked down the road.
Well, hopefully we can work on that and help that a little bit more, so.
Yeah, because I, I think, I don't know, how many down ward may you sit there and look in their eyes and be clear? And I promise in a grateful attitude.
Right. But I, I hope this works out. I really do. Um, so it sounds like the feedback we're getting, you do like what we're doing with this type of thing, okay?
I really appreciate you guys talking to us about the things that they brought in. I think it's a good idea to have you here for one.
Well, I like what Melissa suggested. Let's put it on the agenda like we did tonight. And we'll do the public comment again and then just see, see how, how it goes and get the rules of decorum. I hope all three are on board on that when we bring that up and vote that in. Because I want to read them. I want to put them on the, uh, frame, put it in a frame so we've got it, so everybody can see it. And then maybe we can even put them on the website. That way we're there.
So, and I just thought of that. What do you guys think about this new way of doing the meeting?
My opinion is that, uh, we're here to make decisions. And then you're here to make sure we're making the right decisions. I mean, we work for you. Ain't nobody trying to do what the majority wants, what's best for the community and what I mean. Just coming in complaining is not, uh, it's not helping. I mean, I mean, I know there are concerns, but I'm saying, no one, yeah, I've heard anybody say, how can I help? What can I do to help? It's just...
She, she does all the time.
You know, I mean, it's, it's going to take...
She's been a part of the department for a while.
It's going to take everybody in the community to get, to get this back together. I mean, the four of us are not going to do it. I mean, it's going to take everybody in the community to, uh, to get in and, you know, and do this, I mean.
I think you have people in the community that want to get engaged, but I think the same people be getting on committees. It's the same people in all the support committees. So I think you have people that want to be involved. You really do. That would be good people to be involved.
Well, that, that's a why.
I think it's something to consider.
And that why, are you ever going to give one of us and show their interest? And I mean, I, I consider anybody that, uh, wants to help out and I, I don't...
I write grants all the time. People who help me write grants, I'll take them.
I'm talking about committees. I'm talking about committees. I'm not talking about... Can you just say that last, last year the, uh, redevelopment commission had two empty spots and no one ever called.
I'm asking, I'm asking, if you're, this contact, you're, tell me you want to, you want to, you want to help out and I'll, I'll pay. I'll pay you work, you know, like...
They're still trying these guys out to see if you really want to be open to...
Well, keep trying me out. You know, owe me a count of it. I said I'm going to do something.
Amen, you're doing good.
Just keep on, you know? I've got everything on, but I mean, everything I said I was going to do, I'm going to do it, you know?
And we appreciate your transparency. We appreciate your listening. We appreciate you holding out any voice. We appreciate you guys.
Well, we appreciate you.
Here we go, this, oh, go ahead.
I remember a few quarters of each of that.
We had Eric, make it motion, okay, second.